This all the time. So, and that even goes to ADA concerns. So, we might get a, you know, an issue or complaint about ADA accessibility. It doesn't seem that this width of sidewalk is appropriate and we can find that information. So, and if action is needed, then we go through the process of studying that and taking a request to the Board of Public Works. So, all traffic concerns go to the Board for regulatory changes. You know, and some of these might be, there's, some of these might be simple enough, but some might require additional study. So, if a stop sign request is made for an intersection, we need to do a warrant analysis. So, we've got to look at data around that intersection. What is the volume of traffic? How many crashes or accident occurrences might there have been? And so, we gather that data and determine if it meets a warrant. That also goes with signal timings and configuration changes. So, even if there's a concern over how traffic is flowing, we might have to take a bigger step back and look at a corridor and understand if there is an issue there in terms of flow. So, we may need to do some further investigation here. Now, these really vary in level of our, you know, the way we can turn things around in terms of service requests versus traffic calming engagements. And by traffic calming, we're really talking about residential neighborhood traffic calming. The purpose of our program is to maximize safety for all modes of travel. So, pedestrians, bicyclists, as well as motorists. We want to focus in this program on improving driver behavior, creating opportunities for them to become more aware, more concentrated in their driving. We want to reduce or slow traffic speeds. Obviously, that's probably one of the greatest concerns we hear with traffic calming is speeding traffic. We want to reduce cut-through traffic, unnecessary traffic-related noise that could be generated by vehicles. And we want to improve aesthetics of our neighborhood streets. So, all of those are goals that align with the purpose of our Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. Here are some examples of the types of modes of solutions that we consider viable in our toolkit. Neighborhood Traffic Circle, if you recall, we piloted one of these over on Riverside. A few years ago, we piloted chicanes. We have pedestrian refuge islands in the city. We have speed humps now in the city. We also have radar speed back, speed feedback signs across the city, raised intersections in the city, and then multiple bump outs in the city. So, these are all types of solutions that we might consider. Some of them get a little more elaborate. They go beyond the scope of, say, just our general traffic calming. Always point out that our traffic calming budget annually is $300,000. And so, that is really enough funding to focus on a few improvements across the city. It doesn't really allow for us to do major capital improvements. So, when we're looking at something like a raised intersection or maybe a intersection with bump outs, the budget's gone. We would not be able to do maybe one of those. I always like to point out some non-traffic calming measures. There's that education piece that goes along with traffic issues. Stop signs are not traffic calming measures. Stop signs serve a purpose when they are warranted. However, we know based on lots of research that stop signs don't reduce speed, especially on residential streets. If anything, they tend to lead to vehicles speeding up. As soon as they exit, there are too many stop signs. They're going to hit a stop sign. They're going to speed up. They're going to race to the next intersection. Similarly, children at play signs, sometimes we get requests for these. And unfortunately, these are not regulated signs. And so, and again, studies have shown for years that they don't show, there's no evidence that these actually reduce speeding in neighborhoods. So, they give, they give, if anything, they give residents a false security that drivers are paying attention to these signs and therefore, they're going to slow down, which is not true. This slide shows you our traffic calming process, which we're, we've been slowly fine-tuning over the years. This policy with, where this process is shown is scheduled to go to the Board of Public Works in August of this year for, with the resolution and acceptance of the policy. So, what you can see here is step one, this traffic calming or this traffic, traffic form that we've been talking about. So, it would start with a traffic concern form. We would do a preliminary review of the data. And then, we would take a look at, is this a neighborhood-wide issue or is this just a specific street? We have to be careful about understanding what the geographic boundaries are when we get a request. Because sometimes if we don't step away for a moment and look at the big picture of a request, it could lead to a trickle-down effect of other problems. So, if we simply look at one street, what if a few parallel streets turn out to be cut-through streets now for that same neighborhood? And then, we've just moved the issue over a block or two. In this process, when we're looking at determining, are we talking about a neighborhood or are we talking about a street? So, if it's a neighborhood, we're going to go through what we call a high-level neighborhood engagement process. And that starts with, with really just meeting and interacting with our neighbors. Having a meeting, then coming back and doing some research, gaining input from them, doing a study, and then going back with the proposed plan. We've been walking through this process. We've done it twice. And we're actually in the process of doing it for the third time this summer. So, once we have gone through the engagement, again, if it's a neighborhood versus, or if it's just a corridor, street project, then we would look at, looking at implementing and monitoring maybe temporary measures. So, this is not a required step, but if there are, there may be good reason to do something temporary. And then, we would take our proposed solution to the Board for approval and we would implement a permanent measure. This has happened multiple times in the case with speed humps across the city. So, this question was asked, how many requests do we have at present? We're keeping track since 2018. We have around 150 separate individual requests across the city. And those are, we categorize those as representing 17 different neighborhoods. And that's not necessarily a neighborhood association. That is an area. So, you might have just one corridor represented here. These are for multiple reasons, speeding being the most often seen, pedestrian safety, bicyclist safety, and the safety of children in the neighborhood. So, and again, our budget for 2021 is $300,000, which we say we can, you can, we can usually address two to three neighborhoods per year with that amount of funding. And I did a quick back-of-the-napkin calculation for you. With 150 individual requests, if we were to just simply assume that those were speeding and maybe they're, each of those requests represents a couple blocks, we could put two speed humps across each of those requests and it would cost $4.5 million. So, it's a big problem. Street lighting. Let's do a little overview here of our lighting across the city. Our inventory, we just did an inventory this past year in 2020 that was performed by InFocus last summer in which we determined that of our 12,000 streetlights, 9,000 are owned by AEP and approximately 3,000 are owned by the city. So, those are going to be more decorative ornamental lights. Those are all city-owned lights. So, if you see something of the wood pole, so there's a good example of a decorative street light that the city would own and maintain. This is at the new Corby Ironwood Rockney Intersection versus your typical Cobra-style AEP pole. So, again, in neighborhood streets, though, typically, streetlights are installed by AEP. They can be done right now if, in areas where we might have gaps, a resident can make a request. And they, or they might find an opportunity for new lighting if that area is a part of our annual Light Up South Bend program. We also repair streetlights and we do that when we have knockdowns. And those are handled directly by AEP. Or again, if they are a city-owned light, then our City's Traffic and Lighting Division handles those. Now, those are for more simple knockdown repairs in which underground infrastructure hasn't been damaged. When that happens, it becomes more of, it falls into engineering's hands in terms of a project in which we would have to repair. So, at this time, we have approximately 23 open requests from residents for streetlights, for new streetlights. We review these. And if they are simple one-off, let's say a simple one-off request, we send those to AEP for their engineering. If there's an existing pole in the neighborhood, it's pretty simple. They can then attach a light to the pole. If there's not a pole, and then they have to go through some engineering on their side to install a pole and the light. That's usually about a two- or three-month process. And yes, there are some delays at this time. Of course, the AEP has umpteen types of different delays at times. And we won't blame it on just the storms right now, but they are definitely in doing some emergency work right now. But with COVID, they definitely had some restrictions. During the height of the pandemic, there were some significant rules on how they could interact and do their work. Streetlight outage and repairs, maybe I mentioned this already. Wooden poles, so the typical wooden pole can be reported directly to AEP. And our decorative poles can be reported to 311. So, if anything, it's decorative, then you know it's a city-owned light and you can report that to 311. If you're not familiar with Light Up South Bend, that's our annual program. We use that to close up lighting gaps across the city, in our neighborhoods specifically. So, not so much commercial corridors. We try to keep this focused on neighborhoods. Approximately 60 to 70 streetlights are installed each year by AEP as a part of this partnership in this program. And we do that selection based on a lighting analysis. We look at the existing lights in a neighborhood and we look for gaps. We also have a lamp post program. And that's a cost-share program for residents and they can purchase a discounted solar lamp post. I'm going to give you a little more detail on both of those. Light Up South Bend neighborhoods that have been selected in the past, you can see on this, on this graph. It shows you, over the years, the darker bars are 2014 to 2019. And then, the red bars represent what's proposed for 2021. And so, you can see where efforts have been spent in the past few years. Two, Council Districts 2, 4, and 5 are, were selected this year. And, and again, those are all in neighborhoods that had a high incidence of lighting gaps. So, in District 2, we're over around Washington High School, District 4 on Edison Road, and District 5 in Tugentown Hills neighborhood. Again, the lamp post program is the cost-sharing program that helps residents improve the aesthetics in the neighborhoods. These are easy, self-installed, solar-powered lamp posts. In the past, we had hardwired lamp posts. They were about four times the cost of the lamp posts that are solar-powered. And of course, we had, we had, they were installed by a contractor. So, now, these are homeowner-installed. This year, we have two target areas, LaSalle Park neighborhood and the Southeast neighborhood. These neighborhoods, we call them targets. So, they, the resident actually pays only 10% of the cost of the, of the lamp post versus outside the target area where residents would pay 50%, which is $250. As of today, we received 70 applications. And we already distributed 29 lamp posts at our early-bird distribution. And then, this application was scheduled to close up on Wednesday, on the 30th of June, but we have extended it to July 16th because we have up to 100 available for the program. And we'll, we'll move that date as things go along, depending on the utilization. But there is some planning that has to go into distributing these. And we'll, we have, if we've got, we've got 40-plus residents now waiting for their lamp posts, so we don't want to push it out too far. And if necessary, we could do a third round. The last topic is alley maintenance. City alleys are graded, not paved. If you run across a paved alley, that may be something historic where residents, neighbors paid to pave their alley. But typically, the city does not pave alleys. Alleys are graded. We used the recycled millings from our streets and any additional material if needed. So, if residents want or require that their alley be maintained, all they have to do is call 311. So, and our crew makes that a first priority to address those alleys. They go across the city. It's one crew with two people. And that's their primary focus during the summer months, from May through October. We get this question a lot about the removal of brush, but we do not remove brush and overgrowth from alleys. It's considered the residents' responsibility. Years ago, when all of our trash was picked up in the alleyway, larger vehicles would move through the alley and that would oftentimes take care of a lot of the brush. But now that our solid waste vehicles are all front pickup, they're not moving through the alleys, which means that they're also not tearing up the alleys as much as they did in the past. We graded 385 alleys in 2020 and our goal is right around there. That's, that's right on the average of the goal target for alleys. And that, that probably falls in line with maybe, probably around 5% to 10% of city streets. All right. That is that. With that, I'm sure there's going to be some questions. So, happy to take any questions. I wanted to get through all that information. But we can go back up. Anywhere you want to go.
Thank you for your presentation. We'll start with the at-large representatives and then we'll go directly down the road. And the last person that will be asked, give the opportunity to ask a question will be Councilwoman Sharon McBride. Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
Thank you, President White. Dr. Boiles, thank you for the presentation. I just have one question. When a speed study is conducted, how is that communicated back to the residents? I know as a council member, I have requested a couple, the results of those. How do those get communicated back?
So, it would depend on the nature of the request. So, when we have requests for studies in a neighborhood, our goal is to work with one point of contact. So, we try to find who that point of contact is, if that's maybe the leader of a neighborhood association, or it might be a councilperson who's helping to lead the way. So, the one challenge with speed studies is that when you request a speed study, maybe if it's, if it's for a stop sign or in general, a speeding concern, this is an important detail. We are limited to doing speed studies during the time of year when we can actually take traffic counts. So, we take traffic counts and we do that through a partnership with MACOG. And those counts can happen in the period from April to October, maybe November. It's all about the temperature. So, we have to order counts and we do that with them and their schedule. So, and, and so, another thing that happens is when a, say, a stop sign is requested and we think it belongs with a neighborhood. You know, maybe, maybe we've been, we've had multiple requests from a neighborhood, but they've come from individuals, separate individuals, then we kind of group those together because we wouldn't want to do them as one-offs. We would want to have them looked at cohesively and in an attempt to pull the neighborhood together to look at them in the bigger picture. You know, engineering judgment goes a long way. We like the data to tell the stories. But oftentimes, our quick look at the ADT, the Average Daily Traffic, maybe a quick poll of accident data, we generally know if it's going to meet warrant or it's not going to meet warrant before the actual new traffic counts are taken. Sometimes we even, you probably heard this from us before, sometimes we even ask, we even try to, you know, change the timing of some of the collection of data because events can impact your data. So, there might be a significant problem in an area during one time of the year, but not in others. So, that might not be the right time to do the traffic study because you're not going to get a representation of the problem. So, at this time, like I think I was saying, so, if someone reaches out to us, we try to follow up with them and let them know we'll get back to them. It's just a longer process. So, I think if you were to request a speed study, I'll give an example. Maybe in November of last year, we wouldn't even, we wouldn't have data yet. Or we might be getting the data right now because the traffic counts wouldn't have started until sometime in April or May. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rachel Thomas-Morgan?
Thank you, President White. Thank you, Dr. Boiles, for your presentation. I myself have been a part of our neighborhood traffic calming feedback that you and your team have provided and was very impressed by the presentations that were given by your student interns on the efficacy of each of those traffic calming examples that you had up there. And I was wondering if you could share with us just really briefly, of the examples, of the solutions that you showed us, how do you go about determining for an area which is better? And are, you know, which are more efficacious than others?
Yeah. It is, it is a process. And again, we've done this in two neighborhoods and we're in the process of doing it now with a third neighborhood, where we take all the input and we look at intersections of concern, corridors of concern, and then we look at, we try to determine what kinds of treatments make sense. Again, with our budget, the types of treatments that make sense are going to be the most low-cost economical treatments. So, that might be things like restriping. That might even mean just restriping existing, you know, existing crosswalks in an area. It might include speed humps. It might include radar speed back feed signs. So, speed feedback signs. And those are probably the most economical solutions that we can deploy. When things are more complex, if it's an intersection and there is a high incidence of accidents, it's already a four-way or it's already signalized, then there might be physical changes that would help that intersection, like bump outs. And now, you're getting into something that might be more of a capital project. And that's when we try to engage with our partners in community investment, our planners, to help forecast, to see if there's potential for a project like that to happen in the future. So, the greatest effectiveness usually is with speed humps around six to eight miles per hour is the effectiveness of a speed hump. Generally, speed reduces. If it is something more pedestrian-related, then we would maybe look at pedestrian refuge or raised crossings. We're working with residents in the Near West Side and a lot of concerns near the El Campeito campus on safe crossing. And so, this, this past year, we applied for a Department of Health's Technical Urbanism Grant. And so, we're actually receiving some funds from them to pilot a raised crossing on Thomas Street. So, we try to find creative ways and try to leverage our funding as much as possible to attempt. But those are still, a lot of our solutions are still some that we were trying out. Very mixed emotions about the traffic circle in the past. Same thing on chicanes. And of course, we still get some mixed feedback on speed humps. So, we, but our intent is to look at solutions that make sense and vet those with the neighbors to make sure they feel those also belong in their neighborhood.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Sheila Spalsky?
Thank you, Dr. Boiles, for your presentation this evening. And I do have a question, but before I ask the question, I just wanted everyone to know that the traffic calming measures that your team comes in and does with the neighbors, the neighborhoods, your interns, it's very, it's done in a way that is so interactive and involves them at a level to where they're looking at maps. They're pinpointing where these intersections are. They feel so engaged that there is someone coming from the city and listening to their concerns of what is affecting their neighborhood. It's just so powerful. When you hear traffic calming, it's such a simple phrase, but it is so powerful to actually see that in action. So, I want to thank you for what you're doing in the Rum Village neighborhood. They were very excited, a lot of positive feedback from you and your team. And your students are just amazing. They're just full of energy and they're, he's like, "We're compiling it." And each one talked about their stickers and some wrote right on the map. So, it was, it was really, really nice to see that engagement and the level of engagement from the neighbors. But my question is back to as far as alleys. I get a lot of questions about alleys. And I believe you talked about, you said about 385 a year and that you can call in and people can request to have them graded. So, is that mostly how you reach that number? Or do you actually have a section of, or is it mostly just by request on how you reach that number every year?
Yeah, that's mostly by, that's by request. So, if you, I mean, if you think about, if we get a good five or six months and this crew is, you know, grading alleys every day, with the exception of, let's say, you know, major events happen. So, if we have storm damage or any of those types of things, then they're pulled off of this duty, right? They're on emergency duties. But that's probably on average, four, three to four alleys per day to get graded. And in fact, if I'm correct, the, this, these crew members, they probably work...
Four days a week?
They probably are four days a week. So, maybe four, four or five. So, that's probably, that's where that number comes from. They've got to move through, put the material down. So, there's, you know, there's movement back and forth to bring the material to the site. So. And if they are by request, then they could be in various quadrants of the city in one day.
And my second question is if they're impassable for them to get down there and grade, and I know you mentioned in the presentation, I'm just trying to recall, are they able to go down and trim those, the bushes? And, because I know you said there's nothing in the budget to do that and it sounds like it's on the homeowner's responsibility to do so. But would they still go down and grade those alleys even if they're somewhat impassable? I mean, if you have a little old lady living there and she just doesn't have the money or the means to trim back those bushes and trees that have overgrown, what, what do they do in that case scenario?
Yeah, I don't think they, I don't think that's a deterrent for them.
Okay.
They could take it out? Oh, well, that makes sense. Of course, if it is blocked, you're just saying maybe slightly obstructed because there are branches coming into the alley. I mean, if they can't get through, then they can't get through.
So, but they won't take that down? They would have to tell the neighbors that they would have to pitch together and decide who's overgrown?
Has that ever happened? I don't know.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Boiles, for your presentation. I live in the First District and I would love to have you guys come out and talk to my constituents because I can tell you, I get emails, calls, and voicemails about the traffic patterns. One of the things that I would love to find out is where, is there a map of where these speed humps are at? And can we be able to determine what neighborhoods have them and where we may be able to put some?
Yeah. First thing I'll say is that we've been working with Kathy to engage in Far Northwest. And so, that is going to happen. In fact, we just received a petition for, I believe, speed humps on Lindsay.
Yes.
And so, that is something that we are working on. Lindsay's being paved this summer. And so, we're, we're working on putting something together quickly on site since the street is being paved. It's our intention... Um, it's our intention to try to um also install speed humps on Lindsay this summer. And um, I forgot your second question, I'm sorry.
About the map?
Oh, yes, so we do have a map. Um, uh, actually, I've had my interns working on that this summer. So they have mapped all service requests. So that's where the we, um, so I have a a map that shows the hundred and fifty outstanding service requests, and it all shows, shows you where existing speed humps are. So I'm not, I'm not sure how um public facing it is yet because we haven't vetted it yet, but it is something that um I could share with you to look at. I I'll tell you that um the requests are are pretty um um equally dispersed across the city. Um, almost, I mean, every council district has needs. So, yeah.
Would would love to to engage that, love to have you come to different parts of the of the first district and and then also um the lighting. Uh, how do we, how, how, how do we get more lights in the far northwest part of 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 south of of the district? Because it is, it's very dark, so.
Oh, so one thing I I failed to mention on the lighting, um, I wanted to get to that point about um delays. So we're actually in the process right now of working with AEP on a pretty significant project of LED conversion across the city. Um, so as a part of that, we're working with them right now to um develop and determine what fixture will be utilized for all of the existing AEP lights. So every wooden pole um with a cobra head will be changed out to an LED fixture. Um, and that will happen maybe this year, um, maybe twenty twenty-two. Um, but obviously, there's some um judgment needed for, um, what is the appropriate fixture to match um what lighting is like now? Um, so we're looking at the watts and the lumens that are associated with each of these fixtures. So um because of that, there's some delay this year on Light Up South Bend. Um, it it doesn't make good sense to go ahead, to go ahead and put um older fixtures out when we're just, we're about to go through this conversion process. So um we actually have, um, it's our hope, though, that in this program that they'll, they'll pilot in Light Up South Bend program this year, they'll pilot these new LED fixtures. So the next lights to be installed with Light Up South Bend should be LED fixtures. Um, and then we can get feedback on those fixtures before we go across the city and um implement LED conversion. So um, I'm, I'm off again, I forgot.
I'll make you my best new best friend.
How do you get more in the far northwest? That was the question. Yeah. So um each year, what we like, you know, what we, what we like to do is engage with council. Again, it's been a, it's been a challenging last year. Um, so um we did the best we could this year with trying to just fill in and make it more equitable across the districts. So, but each year, in the past, we've sat down with Councilwoman White. Um, and and we talk about, because she was one of the main proponents of this program and um along with your predecessor. And and so we would work through and um look at where the greatest need was, vet those with them, and and we do the analysis. So if if it's which, you know, which district, um, then we we look for those gaps.
Thank you.
Councilmember Henry Davis.
Sure. Um, and I, you know, I think that, I don't know where to start at. Thank you for coming down. Um, I've been asking for you guys to come down for some time, and here you are. There was a young man that was hit by a car, maybe a couple of weeks ago. It went on to report it. And a lot of what I will say will probably come from this baseline. Smart streets changed the way that the corridors behave with traffic. As a result of the change, people became frustrated. They used our neighborhoods as an alternative travel route. Uh, that travel route became a speedway for most motorists. I know it's probably almost not feasible to like put speed bumps on every street in this city. However, is there any ideas um circulating where we could use some of the temporary speed bumps or biased temporary speed bumps that go out and have been outside? Um, there was one out there, a hour park, I've seen them in other places as well.
So the bad news for temporary speed humps at this point is that um they're really not that um less expensive. The the uh temporary speed hump like you saw out on Jefferson is approximately ten thousand dollars. Um, to install that, the 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 cheapest quote that we've received to date is approximately ten thousand dollars. So it costs us twenty grand to put a temporary speed hump out, where in in general, a permanent speed hump um might cost us around fifteen thousand dollars. And um, so um, we thought those were kind of fluke prices in the past. Um, so recently, we asked for quotes, again, just as like an on-call. Um, we've received some complaints this summer, uh, typical of construction, especially during construction season, then um drivers want to cut through neighborhoods when they come to um a closure. Um, so we, we went out for quotes for just an installation of some of the existing temporaries that we had on stock, and they, it was, it's ten thousand dollars per. So um, you know, we're better off to put in a permanent one.
Reason why I brought that up is because there's going to have to be a more immediate approach. You're talking about a study that's going to take some months. You said a study can only happen during a certain period of time during the year. And so that pushes us already out to next year or even a year after that when you're talking about funding, right? So you're like two years out.
Mm-hmm.
So is there any coordination with this traffic issue that we're suffering from with the South Bend Police Department, like far as enforcement? You can kind of use some of the data that suggests where speed bumps should go because people are calling and saying this is where speeders are really at because people are calling about it. This is where we need enforcement at. I think it needs to be a little bit more creative in how we approach this. There are lives on the line. Uh, we saw a young lady, a young girl coming home from a school um a couple of years ago, she goes through the windshield. And and so she dies because somebody's passing through fast and somebody has to stop fast. So, you know, you know, to put a, a price on someone's life is very difficult. Uh, which shouldn't happen, as a matter of fact, it's insensitive. But we deal with money, and that's what we do. So um, I'm just thinking, you know, is there any coordination with South Bend PD?
We, we do work closely with um the traffic um uh police officer, and so we, we vet solutions with him. He gives us input.
We're not getting anywhere, that's what I'm saying. We're having a circular conversation right now. We're not getting anywhere.
So there are three aspects to um traffic calming. We call them education, enforcement, and engineering. And I, I really am only one of those. And so you're correct.
Because we did bump outs on Pratt Street, and this is, I'll be done right now. We did bump outs on Pratt Street years ago when we went through the Kennedy Park. It was some project.
Yep.
It didn't work. As a matter of fact, Pratt is even more extreme than it was prior to picking the bump outs out there over there and all the other streets that are over in that area. So I, I can't say that the bump outs helped. As a matter of fact, my experience is that they don't help. You know, it just sped up traffic. So I, you know, I, I just think that we need a little bit more immediate response and attention to this. I'm not laying this all at your feet, but this is a part of what you do.
And and I'll tell you that Kennedy Park is um also on our list. I know uh, so Community Investments going through some neighborhood engagements this summer, and as a part of that, we are trying to work synergistically with them. They're doing a a neighborhood plan for Rum Village, and they're doing one for Kennedy Park. And um, so they've been giving us feedback, and I'll be participating in their programs to help get more traffic calming uh information out to those residents.
Thank you. I'm going to move now to Councilman Eli Wax, followed by Councilman Troy Warner.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I definitely learned a lot today. I, I think I'm just going to, forgive me, but follow up on uh what Mr. Davis's comments were. Where I, I appreciate the thoroughness and thoughtfulness that the city and your department takes to decide what the best um solution to individual place might be. Based on the conversations with the council, we're not in that place right now where we could take a, a deliberate, long-term approach where many of these solutions cost hundreds of thousands of dollars or more. We're in a crisis of of reckless driving in our city, and we need to figure out a solution that takes care of the problem as soon as possible. And whether that includes, I mean, I'm just doing some Google searches. Uh, you know, there, there are, seems to be cheaper, um, perhaps not the ideal solution, but there are solutions that are out there. And I, I think we need to um have a conversation of of what we can do to solve this problem most as efficiently as possible and as short of a time as possible.
I agree. Um, I, if you've been Google searching, you can um Google search Detroit and see what they've um done in the past year in terms of speed humps. They've, they've made a significant investment in speed humps. I believe they're installing forty-five hundred this year. Forty-five hundred.
And those are temporary or permanent?
They are um a rubberized form, I believe, but they'll keep them down in a permanent fashion.
Cost apart?
It's less than ten thousand dollars. It's much less.
Yep.
There we go.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing about those solutions for South Bend.
Right on, Eli.
Thank you. Councilman Troy Warner.
I, thank you guys for the work you do. I know it's, it's tough, and I, I like the rest of feeding is up there, feeding frying the top of, going for some trash daily, right? And I, I kind of agree, and I got, I, I think some of the, the narrowing that we've done has increased people's rage. They don't like that, that these streets that used to be two-way, whether it's on the west side or on the east side, are now one-way. And uh, I, I don't know if speed bumps will take care of that. I think um, I think Jaten, you and I talked about, you know, some kind of combination with more police enforcement, and maybe that's not specifically officers, but or something. And and echo his point, we, we need to figure out something. Uh, the number of overturned cars, it's almost daily now that there is a car overturned somewhere, and I listen to the radio, uh, the police radio, I hear it, uh, is, is almost daily. It's just the, the epidemic of road rage. It's scary. Let's figure something else. Do you have coffee?
Okay. Well.
Thank you.
Now move to Councilwoman Sharon McBride.
Thank you. Um, I echo uh what my colleagues said about the traffic calming. I've been asking um in the third district for the three years that I've been on council for traffic calming at specific um locations. I know um particular Miami and Ewing Street has been a hotspot in other areas, so I won't rehash everything, but everyone said. But I do think that there should be more communication or update, like we kind of do the curves and sidewalks that, when you said there's so many requests, but only so many that can be installed a year, that maybe we as council can know um where those requests and are they even, um, are they denied? Um, are they being considered or does it not qualify? Because when we get these requests from our constituents, we don't know where the process is. All we know is that we're filing the request. So I think that would keep us better informed to, instead of having hostile people, you know, thinking that we're not following up on their request, that if there's a way we can be communicated with that. And my second question or uh talking point was about the State Regulation Commission compact. You talked a little bit about it with AEP and the lighting program. And I know in um October, the um I U R C Utilities Regulatory Commission, they um passed the compact agreement with, uh, and there's a service agreement with the City of South Bend and AEP. And if I'm, my memory serves me right, I was looking for the information that if we improve our lighting from uh all-to-be LED lighting, it would improve the public safety issues that we have and also a cost savings. And I believe at the time, it was a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars or something a year in cost savings. And I know also that it's a five-year agreement, but if we have not moved or done anything um in the past year, what happens to that agreement? Is it extended or does it expire still and it's a hard five years? And if so, uh, we definitely need to have a plan. And I don't know if the council is even aware, the, the current new council members are even aware that we have this agreement with AEP to install as lighting's uh breakdown that the contract uh requires for a new LED light to be replaced. So I just wanted you to touch a little bit on there if you can.
Yeah, let me um address that issue. Uh, this is Sarah Corvath, Public Works Director. Um, we have been in a continual dialogue with AEP on uh, you know, from the Light Up South Bend program, uh, but also talking about LEDs for a number of reasons, uh, part of which is public safety and a little brighter lights, part of which is um what it does for the environment and being better uh for the environment and producing less greenhouse gas emissions. Um, so that's something that's been very important to us. Um, we intervened in the last rate case. Um, and uh, we settled outside of uh the case um on an agreement where they lowered their uh streetlight rates by three point four percent. Um, so they actually have a lower rate than we did prior to that. Um, in addition, um, outside of that, we agreed to um uh work with um them on the LED piece on the demand-side management um case that they had. And and what we did there was uh came to an agreement that they would convert all of their lights to LEDs. Um, and so we're in the process of trying to figure out what that means. Um, the city will get to uh uh pick fixtures. We've got a three thousand uh CCT um light, which is uh the, the color temperature, um, you know, it's the very white to yellow light. It's, it's an in-between. Uh, and then um, but it's brighter than what you'll see out there now in terms of the, it's, I should say, whiter than it is right now. Um, a lot of the existing sodium lights have that yellow feel form. This will be a whiter light. In addition, um, we'll get to pick the amount of lumens uh between forty-eight hundred and twenty-two fifty or twenty-two thousand five hundred lumens. Um, the, the problem is we will have an up charge or or there'll be an up charge or down charge depending on uh what we do there. So if it was uh an existing forty-eight hundred lumen light in a neighborhood and we want to go to a ninety-six hundred lumen light, um, it'll give a lot more brightness. However, um, there will be an up charge on those. Uh, but what's going to, what's going to take place is sometime in the next couple of months, AEP is supposed to give us a map back that will show all of their streetlights and what uh lumens they're suggesting we should have in each of these areas. Um, and then we'll take that information, we'll try to make sure that it makes sense in different areas. Um, and uh from there, we'll then have them go ahead and order lights and get them installed as quickly as possible. We still hope that'll happen this year. Uh, one of the issues um has been uh just supply side, uh, getting uh fixtures. Um, since they're going to get over, need to get over nine thousand fixtures, uh, they couldn't make any guarantees if they're going to be able to finish it this year. But that's, our hope is that by the end of this year, we'll have most of those lights done by AEP. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Yes, it does. I'm just glad that it can give the council more of a context about what we um should be a part of as well, because we have a lot of requests in our neighborhoods, and I know it's. specifically on the southeast side, I termed in lights at, with poll numbers and everything in the third district, just on the southeast side. But there are things, and people are willing to help to identify lights that, especially that need immediately replacing as well. So if we could work together with you, that'd be great. Thank you both so much for your presentation.
Again, would like to thank both you, Mr. Horvath and Dr. Bowles, for your presentation. Clearly, that as most of the council members have shared, that we are experiencing an increase in traffic coming through the neighborhoods very dangerously. And again, we have to approach it from a comprehensive perspective, and we're willing to work with you, the administration, and others, because again, it's not decreasing, it's increasing. And we have not actually entered the summer months just yet. So again, thank you for your presentation, and I would encourage council members, if you have any questions or concerns, please reach out to the Department of Public Works as well. Thank you so much.
Excellent job.
I would now like to entertain a motion to resolve into the committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgasky.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hamon.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading and public hearing. I wish to share with you that the bills that were be given a second reading and public hearing have been first given a first reading and set for committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee, where the bill is discussed, and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation of the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. And our first bill up that we have is Bill Number 9421. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 9421 a second reading?
9421, Public Hearing on An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending The Zoning Ordinance For Property Located At 233 and 237 Pagan Street, Councilman District Number Two, in the City of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair, that came before the zoning and annexation committee this afternoon, and comes to the committee of the whole with no recommendation.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present?
Yes, thank you, Council. Joe Molnar, zoning specialist, with offices on the 14th floor of the county city building. Today before you, as we discussed at committee, is a rezoning for property located at 233 and 237 Pagan Street. This is, these two properties are located just two blocks west of City Cemetery, which you can see here, and these two properties outlined in blue. The request today is to rezone from U1, Urban Neighborhood 1. That is primarily a single-family neighborhood district, which we're pretty familiar with across the city. Essentially, it means one housing unit per lot. The request is to rezone to U2, Urban Neighborhood 2, which allows for up to four housing units per lot, so that's not unlimited multifamily, it's more of that missing middle we talk about from time to time. On the map here, you can see the zoning map as it currently is. The light brown is the U1, Urban Neighborhood 1, and the dark brown is the U2, Urban Neighborhood 2. So you can see that a large percentage of the lots on Linden Street, at least in this portion of Linden Street, are already zoned U2. The petitioner is requesting this rezoning because they want to build four townhomes on these two lots. Essentially, they want to build two townhomes on each lot, all four connected, and that requires the rezoning to go up to the U2 district. Just some background on the neighborhood itself, and we give this because a lot of times when we rezone to this U2 district, there's some concern maybe about adding density to the neighborhood, and what that, and what that means at a neighborhood standpoint. This neighborhood was primarily built out in the 1880s and 1890s, that's when many of the existing structures date from. By 1972, this block that the properties are located was fully built out. Remember, we're talking about these two properties here. In 1972, the entire two blocks that this encompasses had 48 houses, but this is 90 years after the establishment of the neighborhood. And by, starting in the 70s, we started seeing a pretty quick deterioration and a rapid loss of housing stock in the neighborhood. By 1993, so 20 years later, already 22 houses had been torn down, and the houses that were in question, or the lots that are in question today were lost. Those were both torn down in the mid-1970s, from what we can see from aerial photos. And then by 2013, the two-block area is down to 17 houses, so another nine houses were lost. And then today, only 14 houses remain. And like I said, the two lots in question, they've been vacant for about 50 years. And about two-thirds of these vacant lots have been vacant for about that time as well. This tracks with the overall neighborhood, the census tract 21, which is the larger neighborhood that these properties are located in. Like the City of South Bend has experienced population decline, starting in the 1960s. This graph shows the population of the neighborhood dating from 1960 to 2010. We don't have 2020 census data yet, that should come out in the next couple of months. So this tracks with what we're seeing on the ground at a housing level, is a significant reduction in housing in that whole neighborhood as a whole. This is what the lots look like currently, obviously, since they've been vacant for 50 years, there's been significant growth of trees and other brush. You can see someone did install a fence, and it looks like someone's using probably an abandoned car. The sidewalk has completely deteriorated away, I couldn't even find it on this side of the street. And here's just another view looking down. As you can see, the existing houses are still there, and then this is the two lots, starting here and here, that we're talking about today. This is the proposal by the petitioner, it's four housing units, like I said, on the two lots combined. These would be townhomes, so they would be touching. And this is the site plan they presented, any vehicular access to the sites would be from the alley in the rear of the property, that's how they would access. There would be no curb cuts on Pagan. And here was a design submitted by the petitioner for what these might look like. Obviously, these are single-family units, so that's not what they're, exactly what they're proposing, they're proposing them to be connected. So if you imagine these two side by side with two more side by side, that's a rough estimate of what they gave, of what you could assume that this type of construction would produce. The staff viewed the petition favorably. The comprehensive plan calls for the city to help encourage a broad range of housing type. Townhomes are not a type we've seen too often, we've seen it a little more in the last few years, that would need that billing, as well as helping restore some of that housing stock to a neighborhood that's lost quite a bit of it. It went to the Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation by staff, and it's coming to you from the Plan Commission as well with a favorable recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and I do see that Ella D'Amico is online, as she is the primary petitioner.
Thank you, Mr. Molnar. Would she like to say something, since she's on the line?
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Hi there, my name is Ella D'Amico. I am the founder and managing director for Contain Art Community. Contain Art Community is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) dedicated to community development and education in sustainability. And what we're proposing actually is to pilot some housing developments across South Bend, while also increasing affordability and feeding into both the retail market for individuals to purchase homes, as well as the rental market. Right now, as many of you, you know, there is a significant housing crisis in the City of South Bend, and you can find, while, while real estate is at a premium, and people are purchasing at sight unseen, most of the real estate that's available is outside of South Bend. So myself and my team is hoping to increase buyer potential, as well as rental potential more densely in South Bend to help support the housing crisis. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, at this time, do you have any questions of the petitioner?
I'll ask a question.
Okay. Councilman Lee?
In the committee, we asked how much would these houses cost, and I just wanted to make sure that number was correct. They said anywhere between $28,000 to $48,000. I just wanted to get that, that number correct.
Sure. So we are actually offering a number of sizes. For this particular, these particular lots, 233 Pagan and 237 Pagan, those are 1,200 square feet townhouses. Those would run in the 100,000 range. We do have some, some houses that are much smaller than that, roughly 640 square feet. We're aiming to, to work with, you know, small, single-family homes, two, three bedrooms, two bath, but we're also wanting to keep the, the cost down significantly. Although there are some outliers in South Bend, both high and low, you know, you can, you can find some homes between, you know, 30 and 50,000 that are in serious deterioration, while in the higher end, you can find homes, you know, in the 650s to broaching millions. The average cost of the home in South Bend proper is in the hundreds to the 150,000 range, and we're attempting to stay at that or lower.
And these are shipping, shipping container homes, correct?
So we're piloting the construction with multiple, multiple different venues. It is a steel structure home, and shipping containers is one component, yes.
Is there another council member that has a question? Councilman Davis?
I don't even know what to ask. This is greater than what we're facing right now. I'll just wait for comments.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay. Councilwoman Tomas Morgan.
Thank you, Chair. My question mainly is, is one of quality. I think that, you know, the idea of container homes is fairly new. Could you say a little bit more about that? And maybe as well, I mean, the petitioner, but also our staff? Can you say more about the, the quality of these kinds of homes?
Good afternoon, this is Angela Smith, zoning administrator for the City of South Bend, with offices located on the 14th floor of the county city building. All of these homes would be like new construction for any home or residential unit. They would need to meet all residential building standards and the residential building code. In fact, as, in terms of zoning, we don't look at these any differently than we would stick-built homes. So if they meet the residential building code and the minimum standards for efficiency and the things required of a stick-built home, they would apply here, too. I believe Ella can touch a little bit more. In many ways, I think they're actually more energy efficient, and I believe they do some treatments to help with long-term sustainability. So I'll let Ella touch on that part, but for a building code, these would meet or exceed what's required.
Thank you very much. Actually, that, that is the case. So as I mentioned before, we are using steel construction as one component of our building project. Over five years now has gone into the research and application of these particular buildings that we are wanting to structure. So we'll have a typical foundation, just like any brand-new stick-built home. In addition, we will also have a deep foundation to remediate some of the properties that we have, that have dirty soil or unstable soil, using helical piles and different reinforcement systems. We are using green and energy-efficient insulation to exceed the minimum requirements for heating and cooling. We're also using many split systems, once again, to exceed the minimum requirements for that, as well as energy-efficient windows and different coatings that'll go on the exteriors and interiors of the home to both improve energy efficiencies and the long-term sustainability of the home.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
President White, you got a question?
Yes, I have a question regarding the cost of the homes, and early on, we did hear anywhere from 20, $40,000, and now you're saying 100,000 up to 150,000. But in that area, I don't know if the homes are costing that much, you know, if I remember where you're building at. So what market would you be reaching out to in terms of what you've just shared with us in terms of the actual cost?
Sure. So we are attempting to both reach out to the local market and provide new, new construction, and, as well as contract with Section 8, and provide some creative rental housing to the local market. There will be plenty of, of potential real estate on the market for purchase, but the idea is to stabilize the existing, the existing structure that's already there, and provide real estate that, that would target some of the individuals who, who already reside in the area. The reality is that anything that's, that's on the market right now, that's costing, you know, below 100,000, it has been there and may or may not be in, in repair. It's almost unheard of to try and enter the new construction market for anything under 100,000, and, and we're attempting to do that.
All right, thank you. Is there any other council members that have a question? If not, we're gonna move to the public portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 9421?
I'm not sure if it's in favor, or if it's a question, or if it's opposition, but we do have someone from the public that is, has their hand up, and that is Jordan Geiger. Jordan, if you want to state your name and your address, and unmute yourself for the record, please.
Yeah, Jordan Geiger, Black Lives Matter, 424 South Michigan Street. I guess I'm really speaking in favor of this. I've had a chance to meet with Ella and some of the folks who she's working with around this, and I think it's a promising pilot project. In my experience, I know some years ago, and most of you council members aren't familiar with this, but back in 2017, the city was looking to commission a housing market study. And in, in doing that, we had raised concerns about where they were conducting that study. We, in particular, wanted them to look at far west-side census tracts to determine what the housing demands were there. By, I think they were looking at by jobs that folks might have, but also, too, by income levels. One trend that we saw in previous market studies is that they were looking at households or families that were making $50,000 or more. And what we argued was that we had to look at the demand for low-income and affordable housing, so those who make 30% of the area median income or less. I think we're asking these questions right now because that... I think we're asking these questions right now because that wasn't really followed through. Like, there's been a lot of focus on Census Track 6 and where the near west side, I forgot, I don't know if that's Census Track 21 or 19. It might be 19. But I think we have these questions because we haven't been able to look, like to conduct an actual housing market analysis in far west side communities, which is why we've also been calling for planning dollars for these west side neighborhoods. I was recently in that neighborhood, talked with some of the residents, Viola Sims, Mr. James. And as Councilman Davis mentioned, like, we have a mutual family member who has a house on a nearby street. And there has not been a lot of activity in that area. And so, you know, just based on my own experience and seeing what other pilot programs have been moving through the city from $160,000 tiny homes to the activity in the southeast side. And there's even been questions around the quality of housing for all of these projects. I just think that it's important that we try to work with this developer to do something in that neighborhood, because it has a lot of potential. And again, it's a pilot project. I think the questions that have been raised are like founded, but I think they can be, you know, worked out throughout the process like that, which has happened in other projects. So I'm speaking in favor of it, and I would hope that the city and the council would commit to doing more for west side census contracts or census tracts as far as planning, and then also conducting housing market studies or analyses.
Okay, thank you. Clerk Jones, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of Bill 9421?
I don't see anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 9421.
Okay, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition?
There is no one from the public present to speak in opposition of Bill 9421.
Okay, thank you. At this point, the public hearing on Bill 9421 is now closed. Council members, do you wish to make any statements regarding Bill 9421? Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, this project lies in the second district, almost in the heart of second district if you look at the geographical location. There are some very, very, like, large concerns on my end, not necessarily because it's a container home and it's made out of steel and it's a container itself. Because this is something that is happening in big parts of the west coast of California. There are several developments where these things are actually taking place. And I'm seeing some really, really slick designs that was like, yeah, I think I will move into one of those as well. But the conversation has to go past, you know, just the surface-level discussion that we have normally about things like this. You're watching and you're seeing an introduction of new housing coming in. We don't know what that looks like and how that actually is going to perform on our market, meaning the 150,000, 200,000, 300,000, or even things lower than that. There is absolutely no strategy that I have seen, read, or been even a part of to introduce this sort of housing to our area. And I'm not saying that because I don't want to see this happen, or even I do want to see this happen. What I'm saying is that when we get into a discussion about housing, you're talking about, I think it's a, what is it, six, four, six, four to six-mile radius? When we're talking about appraisals, we're talking about assessments for an area. We're talking about a number of things that go into play when we're talking about housing. It's just not that house, you know? And so, you know, I want to harness the energy that this developer is coming in with, because I think it's awesome. But what I do not want to do is put that developer or even that neighborhood in a much severe place than they already are in. Meaning, we say yes, it's built, and then we don't know what happens next. And then it's another 20 years from now before we even see anything come in that says investment. I'm going to ask if there is any appetite on the end, because this is already going through zoning. The administration, and you probably don't have anybody here right now, but we need to have a discussion about affordable housing, and especially how the container homes fits in those areas. Because there are a number of open lots in that area that are owned by the city, like redevelopment or city, just different names on there, that could help accompany this sort of development with just not four, but eight or 16, which is obviously needed. So to put this in a position of a win situation in that community over in that area, there has to be a broader conversation, and it must be more than just these four.
Okay, thank you. Does any other council member wish to make a statement in reference to Bill 9421? Councilwoman Tomas Morgan?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just want to lend my support to this project. I live not too far from this area, and the number of empty lots in the neighborhood, it's, I will say, it's exciting to neighbors to be able to see interest in new construction in that part of the city. And this is something novel, these container homes. And, but I think with more research and with more familiarity with them, I mean, I like the energy efficiency that is described in these homes. The architectural rendering is quite handsome. And the, I'm open to supporting such a pilot project, especially in an area where we desperately need to see housing stock increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other council member that wishes to make a statement regarding Bill 9421? Councilman Lee?
I would like to see, I'm very interested in seeing how this is going to play out throughout the neighborhood or what the future plans, as Mr. Davis said, what's the future plans for this area? And that's my statement.
Okay, thank you. If there is no one else wishing to make a statement, I'll now entertain a motion regarding Bill 9421?
I'd like to send Bill 9421 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, the motion, there's been a motion and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
He asked me to answer right now.
Yep.
An abstain?
No.
No, you can't. You do have to vote a yes or no.
I'm stalling now. Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Okay, thank you. Bill 9421 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill, which is Bill 9621. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 9621 a second reading?
Yes. Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, creating the American Rescue Plan Fund Number 263.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Bill 9621 comes out of Personnel and Finance Committee with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present? Please state your name and address and share with us the key points. Mr. Parker?
Yes, thanks, Chair Nizgatsky. Dan Parker, City Controller. My office is on the 12th floor of the county city building. So this Bill 9621 is the American Rescue Plan Fund Creation Bill. So what this bill does is establishes the fund into which the rescue plan dollars will be received and from which those dollars will be spent. Although the bill does make clear that the expenditures from the fund are subject to appropriation, the bill does not actually appropriate any of the funds. The discussions about appropriations will occur later, including later this evening, as we saw in committee as well. But the full discussion about the full ARP funding, $59 million, will take place over the next several weeks and months, and beginning with the Personnel and Finance Committee meeting on July the 14th. The other thing this bill does is it ensures that all expenditures of this fund will conform with the requirements set forth in the American Rescue Plan Act that are codified in Section 603(c) of the Social Security Act. Basically, those are four acceptable uses. The first one is to respond to the public health emergency created by COVID or its negative economic impacts, so that is fairly broad. To respond, the second one is to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to those eligible workers. The third eligible use is for the provision of government services to the extent that revenues were reduced due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And then the fourth eligible use is to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. So the bill makes clear that those are the only eligible expenditures from this fund. And I'm happy to take any questions that council would have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Parker. Council members, do you have any questions on the petitioner? No, okay. I do not see any council members that have a question at this time. So we will go to the public portion hearing. Clerk Jones, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of Bill 9621?
There is no one from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 9621.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
There is no one from the public wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 9621.
Okay, thank you. At this point, the public hearing on Bill 9621 is now closed. Council members, do you wish to make any statements regarding the bill? If not, I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 9621?
I would like to make a motion for passage of Bill 94-96, no, 94-21.
That is 96.
Okay, 96-21, sorry.
I second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, Bill 9621 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. We're going to move on to Bill 9721. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 9721 a second reading?
9721, public hearing on an ordinance of the South Bend Common Council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, creating the professional sports and convention development area fund number 413.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, the Bill 9721 was heard in Personnel and Finance Committee this afternoon and comes to the committee as a whole with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present? Please state your name and share with us the key points regarding the bill. Mr. Parker?
Thanks, Chair Nizgatsky. Dan Parker, City Controller, 12th floor of the county city building. Bill 9721 is the fulfillment of something that we talked about at the previous council meeting on June 14th, when council passed a resolution to establish a professional sports and convention development area, taxing area. As we talked about at that meeting, that establishment of that taxing area doesn't create any new taxes. It doesn't increase taxes. What it does is it captures taxes, specifically sales taxes and income taxes that would have otherwise been remitted down to the state and instead keeps those taxes here locally to be used for capital projects on city-owned facilities that are within the taxing area. In this case, specifically, convention areas or professional sports complexes, such as the baseball field. So that resolution, creating the taxing area, was passed last council meeting. So this bill simply creates the fund into which that revenue will be deposited and from which the expenditures will be made. As we said at the last meeting, we're anticipating somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.5 to $2 million in revenue annually to go into that fund. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Council members, do you have any questions? Okay, I see no questions. At this time, we're going to move to the public portion of the hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 9721?
There is no one from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 9721.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
There is no one from the public wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 9721.
Okay, thank you. At this point, the public hearing on Bill 9721 is now closed. Is there any statements the council wishes to make? If not, I wish to entertain a motion regarding Bill 9721?
I'm
A motion that Bill 97-21 be sent to the council, full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? Oh. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Bill 9721 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. We're now going to move on to Bill 9821. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 9821 a second reading?
9821, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending ordinance number 10752-20, which fix maximum salaries and wages of appointed officers and non-bargaining employees of the city of South Bend for calendar year 2021 to establish two new full-time positions.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, 9821 was heard in front of the Personnel and Finance Committee and comes to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Chair Nizgatsky. Bill 9821 is the salary ordinance amendment bill. So what this bill does is amend the 2021 non-bargaining salary ordinance, specifically to add two full-time positions. The first one is a lead grant administrator position with a maximum annual salary of $53,000. This was actually originally contemplated as a contract position, but the city did have difficulties finding qualified individuals or companies, or really anybody who was willing to work on a contract basis. And specifically, as Santi talked about in the committee meeting this afternoon, the desire for benefited, a benefited position was high among the folks who weren't willing to take the contract position. So we are asking to make this into a full-time benefited position. It is likely that all, or at least a portion of the salary, will be reimbursable through the state-led grant and/or the federal-led grant. And then a request for an additional appropriation for the budget for six months of this position is in Bill 121. The second position added by this bill is a permitting and licensing compliance specialist with a maximum annual salary of $50,782. This was originally contemplated in the 2021 budget as a part-time position. And because it was in the budget as a part-time position, no additional budget is needed to convert it into a full-time position for the remaining six months of 2021. And thus, you won't see a request for that appropriation in Bill 121. Anything to add to that, Santi?
I think you did a great job. This is Santi Garcés, Executive Director of Community Investment with 14, with offices in the 14th floor of the city county building.
All right, and thank you. With that, we'll be happy to take any questions from council.
Okay, thank you. Council members, do you have any questions for Mr. Parker? Okay. Mr. Wax?
Thank you.
Councilman Wax, excuse me.
This is a rephrasing of a previous question that I asked earlier, but do you know when the lead coordinator might be hired?
So we have posted the position in anticipation of it being accepted. So if you approve the position, we've already started kind of trying to get interest from candidates. So our hope would be that in, once it's approved by council, that we'd be able to hire the position within a matter of weeks.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions? Okay, if not, we're going to go to the public portion. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of Bill 9821?
There is no one from the public expressing There is no one from the public expressing interest to speak in favor of Bill 9821.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
There is no one from the public wishing to speak in opposition with 9821.
Okay, thank you. At this point, the public hearing on Bill 9821 is now closed. Is there any council members that wish to make a statement regarding this bill? Councilman Lee?
I think that it's going to be beneficial having somebody at the helm of this lead program that we are excited about actually getting implemented and going. So excited about that.
Thank you. Councilman Rachel Tomas Morgan?
Thank you, Chair. I just, I too, just want to add my excitement to this. I know it's been really difficult. We've discussed this with Mr. Garces, how challenging it has been to fill that contract position. And so this is a real positive step forward for our lead remediation program. And really look forward to filling this position so we can get this program up and running and spend those dollars that we have. And also, I guess, create proof of concept that we can be competitive for future grants as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just like to say that I am very thrilled to see that we are finally getting this position for the lead coordinator, as well as the licensing auditor. Both of them very important in our community from two different aspects. One is public health crisis almost for our children that are getting lead poisoned. Being able to have someone to administer that grant and dole out those dollars for us to spend them down is critical. The other with the licensing auditor is to make sure that the contractors that are coming in and building in our city are qualified, they are properly bonded and licensed, and are pulling the correct permits needed. So I am excited and support this measure fully. I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 9821.
I move that it goes before the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
There has been a motion and there's been a second. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Uh, thank you. Bill Number 9821 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. We're going to move on to Bill Number 9921. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 9921 a second reading?
9921, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, For Budget Transfers for Various Departments Within the City of South Bend, Indiana, For the Year 2021.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Bill 9921 comes to the committee as a whole with a favorable recommendation from the Personnel and Finance Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Parker, are you here?
Point of order, Chair.
Yes.
Did we have public portion for Bill 9821?
Yes.
Okay, I was seeing that Mr. Jesse Davis had his hand up asking for no public input, so I just wanted to make sure that it was.
Um, no, I go through and check off as I move through. Clerk Jones, we did public input, did we not?
We did public input and there was no, no one raised their hands.
I just saw his hand and didn't want to be dismissive. Thank you for reporting.
Right, during the time that we had the public portion, there were, there was no hands up. It came, a hand came up after Councilmember Niskowski announced that the public portion was closed.
Thank you so much. I just didn't want to miss it if we were out of, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman McBride. So where are we at here? So I lost my track here. So is there any councilmen's members who have questions on Bill 9921? Or, I'm sorry, Mr. Parker. Yeah, I have to back up. Sorry, I lost my thought after I had to go back to the last bill. Could you please make your presentation, Mr. Parker?
Of course, yeah, I thought you were just letting me off the hook, Councilman Niskowski.
No.
Bill 9921 is the first of the two normal quarterly budget adjustment bills. This is the budget transfer bill, so there are a number of budget transfers on there. They do not increase or decrease the overall budget. They're all relatively small relative to the budget of the departments. Basically, what this does is move between different divisions within the same fund or between different cost categories. So moving from supplies to services, capital, supplies, et cetera. We always encourage departments to work within their existing budgets where possible instead of asking for additional appropriations when things come up. And so that's, that's what gives rise to this bill. But I'm happy to answer any questions on any of the specifics, budget adjustments there.
Okay, thank you. Counsel members, do you have any questions for Mr. Parker in reference to Bill 9921? Okay, I do not see anyone who has any questions. At this point, we'll move to the public portion hearing. Clerk Jones, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 9921?
I don't see anyone from the public with their hands up or expressing interest in speaking in favor of Bill 9921.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 9921?
I don't see anyone expressing interest to speak in opposition of Bill 9921.
Okay, thank you. At this point, the public hearing on Bill 9921 is now closed. Counsel members, do you wish to make any statements regarding the bill? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 9921.
I move that Bill 99 dash 21 be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Bill 9921 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Jones, we're going to move to the last bill, is Bill Number 100 dash 21. Would you please give it a second reading?
121, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Appropriating Additional Funds for Certain Departmental and City Services Operations for the Year 2021. Of $1,016,000 from Parks and Recreation Fund Number 201, $144,380 from the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund Number 202, $588,177 from the Economic Development State Grant Fund Number 210, $34,092 from the DCI Operations Fund Number 211, $55,488 from the Gift Donation Bequest Fund Number 217, $65,000 from the Law Enforcement Continuing Education Fund Number 220, $23,862 from the Code Enforcement Fund Number 230, $100,000 from the Lloyd 2016 Special Distribution Fund Number 257, $500,000 from the American Rescue Plan Fund Number 263, $1 million from the COVID-19 Response Fund Number 264, $25,105 from the Local Road and Bridge Grant Fund Number 265, $646,763 from the IT Innovation 311 Call Center Fund Number 279, $57,118 from the COPS More Grant Fund Number 295, $150,000 from the Local Income Tax Certified Shares Fund Number 404, $494,290 from the Local Income Tax Economic Development Fund Number 408, $23,862 from the Consolidated Building Fund Number 600, $197,600 from the Sewer Repair Insurance Fund Number 640, and $868,162 from the Building Corporation Fund Number 755.
Okay, thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, substitute Bill 100 dash 21 comes out of the Personnel and Finance Committee with no recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Do we have to rebuild? Do we have to now vote on the substitute bill?
Correct. You have to accept the substitute.
I make a motion to accept substitute Bill 100 dash 21.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and seconded. Do we have to call the roll?
Yes.
Clerk Jones?
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Chair Niskowski. So this is the, obviously, the second of the two quarterly budget adjustment bills. And this one is the additional appropriation request bill. The, as always, this bill is divided into four parts. The first one is, I'm sorry today. There we go. You guys still there?
Yep, we're here.
All right, sorry about that. My computer froze real quick. The first one is unanticipated expenses. And the, this is items that are not in the budget, but they are supported either by current revenue sources or by cash reserves, and they're representing items that are generally being appropriated for the first time. If I could point out just a few of these, the second one on there from the DCI Operations Fund, it represents the appropriation of the salaries expense that we just talked about for the lead grant FTE, as well as the associated benefits for that FTE. And then if I could go down to the second to last one on this screen from the Local Income Tax Certified Shares Fund, $150,000 for a facilities condition assessment. What this appropriation is for is for the city to undertake a study to really just assess the current condition of all of our buildings, all of our facilities, everything from roofs and HVAC and plumbing, electrical, to really just get a comprehensive look at where those, where those different components stand, what they're, where they're at in their lifecycle, and really start to plan out where, when they might need to be replaced so that we can get a pretty comprehensive capital plan together. And this study would be the first, first step in getting that data so that we can really plan when these things, which in some cases are extremely expensive, will need to be replaced in the future. The second category is supported by new revenue. So these are expenditures that are supported by revenue that was not included in the initial budget. And so this is all not coming from city reserves, but is supported by, by revenue, that new revenue that's coming into the city. The one that got the most amount of attention during the committee meeting this afternoon is the $500,000 from the American Rescue Plan Fund. And to address some of the, the economic, the businesses that were impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic and the economic impacts that they felt, and really supplement a program that started off in the downtown area with, with grants that were announced from DTSB or in conjunction with DTSB, with, with city funding behind it, and really push that, those programs out into the neighborhoods, into the corridors. During the committee meeting, I was requested that we come back with a, with a breakdown of how that funding is going to be spent. This is, this is what we came up with during the break and represents the plan. These numbers are subject to fluctuation because some of this is still in flux. Some of this is, these are estimates, some of this is working with the neighborhood associations, working with the different neighborhoods, working with the different businesses in the, in these corridors to see what the need is and see how we can be most effective. But essentially, what we're asking council to do is to make sure that these, these dollars are available when they're needed. We want to have the full discussion about how the ARP funding will be utilized. The administration's very excited about that discussion. We want to make sure that everybody's voice is heard and that the perspective of the administration and of council and of residents and of neighborhood associations and businesses and everybody's voice is, is present in divining the strategies and the priorities for that discussion. But that, getting all of that feedback takes time. And so we want to make sure that if there are things we can be doing now to stimulate the economy in the, in the corridors, things like providing direct business support, supporting exterior spaces, supporting events, doing facade type of work, supporting safety, to make sure that the economic bounce back that we're experiencing as a city after the, after the pandemic can continue, or work we can do in the neighborhoods, working with neighborhood associations to actually determine the appropriate projects to help, help residents recover and prosper. The, these projects are to be defined and really working with the neighborhood associations of, okay, what are some low-cost, high-impact projects that, that will really make a difference to help residents recover after what was a very difficult year? We, we just, as, obviously, as administration, recognize that there's been a lot of, lot of work done on the, on the downtown businesses, but how can we push that out into the neighborhoods? I thought this was a pretty interesting map to show. This is restaurants, but many businesses follow similar, similar, many retail businesses follow similar kind of pattern. This is just a heat map showing where restaurants are located in the city. So you can see there's a lot in the downtown core, but there's a lot in the neighborhoods as well, and particularly along those neighborhood corridors, and how can we help support them during this time as well? The third category of additional appropriation requests is capital projects. So this, these are appropriations to capital projects funds. Generally, these have been appropriated in prior years and just need to be appropriated in the current year. That is the case for the first two items listed on here. The last one is actually, the city did have an opportunity to bundle some of the IT purchases that we were planning on making over the next five years. And in doing so, actually, are anticipating to save about $250,000 over the next five years by bundling them upfront and then actually leasing them over five years, some of those equipment, as well as IT services. So this appropriation request simply allows us to make that purchase upfront. The last category of additional appropriation requests is administrative items. These are generally things that you wouldn't necessarily consider to be expenditures, but they're, but they're important for accounting purposes. They're often things like transfers between funds or appropriations for grant funds that weren't carried forward from prior, prior years. So these are things that were in previous year's budgets and just weren't, weren't carried forward for one reason or another. So you'll see that, the second one on there is the appropriation of the lead grant funds. And then an example of the other category, which is transfers between funds, is the biggest item on here is $1 million from the COVID-19 Response Fund. That's simply a transfer back to the Economic Development Income Tax Fund, which is a reverse of a transfer that we made in Q4 of 2021, or excuse me, Q4 of 2020, where we wanted to cover some of the unfunded expenses from that COVID-19 Response Fund. At the time, we said we would search for additional funding sources. Now with ARP and others, we have found that and we don't need to fund it from the income tax fund. And assuming that, as the discussions develop with, with how we utilize the ARP funds, a component of that will be how we fund those expenditures that are already incurred. And so we didn't want to presume that that funding mechanism would be income tax, which is what it was today. So that is that. Sure, Santi and I, between the two of us, unless, Santi, you have anything else that you want to, to talk through on the ARP side immediately, we will, we can take questions.
Santi, would you like to say anything before I ask the council members if they have any questions for you?
Uh, no, I, I think that in the interest of time, I'll just wait. If you have questions, happy to, to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Counsel members, do you have any questions for Mr. Parker or for Mr. Garces? Councilman Davis?
Yeah, you talked about the neighborhood, but you listed restaurant. You said neighborhood being higher priority than restaurant, but the dollar amounts would suggest that the restaurant business is a higher priority. I'm trying to understand the discussion.
Yeah, again, I would just say, following what Dan said, this is just a broad outline of how we are, how we plan on spending the funds. There are also other funds that have been appropriated as part of the budget process that, that will have to come into play. The corridors, in many cases, are within, you know, they, they, they're within or bounding the different neighborhoods. So for instance, Linden Avenue is one of the, the quarters that is within our, our strategy, which is within the Kennedy Park neighborhood. So again, this is an initial estimate and, and we think that both of these are complementary.
Well, the Kennedy, I mean, excuse me, the Linden Avenue corridor hasn't been realized. I've asked for more information on that. I want to see it happen. The conceptual drawings, designs. The conceptual drawings, designs, I haven't seen them. The, the young lady that just came before us, the business owner with the Pagan Street thing, that's right off of the corridor. There has been absolutely no engagement for me to realize that the monies that you're talking about will go over there, and for what? There's probably maybe, when that whole street from Olive, between Olive and Walnut, you may have three business owners. And so how is that going to work in efforts of, of, I guess, sprucing up the area?
So if you remember, we, you and I were together at one of the engagement sessions for the Kennedy Park Plan, which is one of the four plans that the planning team is working on. So we met there with Ms. Viola Sims and some of the other neighborhoods, so, and members of the Neighborhood Association. So again, our intent is develop programming that serves the different quarters, not only Linden Avenue, but the other quarters and with the Neighborhood Associations, work with, with them to address their priorities.
Yeah, thank you, but it just seems like it's going in reverse versus forward. I've never seen a project get defined with dollar amounts when there is actually nothing on paper to suggest that there is going to be a project there, and there is no strategy that's listed. I've never seen it before.
It's, it's being drafted, and precisely the meeting that we attended is one of the meetings where we were requesting feedback from the neighborhood around the priorities and the types of things that they would like to see. So I just, as a reminder to everyone, that the, the, the plan is still actively being drafted. We're in kind of the initial listening mode. And if you're interested in providing feedback, you can go to together.southbendian.gov, and you can see all the different pieces of feedback around there. And the next step will be drafting some of the ideas that we've seen from the, from the neighborhood. And there's where you can see a draft, and obviously, they'll be shared with the, with the members of the neighborhood as well. So you can participate that way.
Okay, is there any other councilman, Councilman Lee?
Yep. Can you give us that website again?
Definitely. It is together.southbendian.gov. I can put it on the chat. That is the city's engagement portal, and you can see information related to all of the four Neighborhood Association plans that are underway, including Ram Village, the Near West Side, Kennedy Park, and the Northeast Neighborhood, as well as other initiatives as well. You can provide comment, and then based on that comment is what we're using to, and obviously, in-person meetings and other forms of feedback we're using to inform the plans. And again, those plans will eventually come to the council for approval, and they, those plans become part of the way the zoning interpretations. Again, it's a lens for interpreting zoning decisions as well as tax credit applications and other things. It's a really kind of critical part of the process, and we're lucky and our, and our team has been working hard and producing four of these at the same time. Those were delayed because of COVID, but happy to share the, the link here.
Now, what, what about other neighborhoods that are not part of the four neighborhoods that have a plan? What, what is the course of action for those outlying neighborhoods?
So, well, and I want to make sure that it's clear that the money that we're requesting to be appropriated is not only for those four. This is not part of the neighborhood plan process, I think. I was responding to Councilman Davis with his concerns about lack of, of an actual plan and a lack of engagement, which both of those are underway. With other neighborhoods, other neighborhood plans, again, we've heard concerns from different members of the public and neighbor, and members of the council that want other areas and other neighborhoods to get neighborhood plans. So obviously, we, we considered the feedback whenever we make our request for funding for the next year around like, what are we going to budget to do neighborhood plans? So in general, if there's no neighborhood plan, the comprehensive plan is the, I believe, is the most authoritative plan that takes precedent.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other council members who have a question? Councilwoman Hammond?
I need to agree with Councilman Davis that this request seems extremely premature. We have a meeting as a council on July fourteenth, which is in a very short period of time, which will allow us to begin some of the discussions around ideas for the American Rescue Plan Fund. To be requesting dollar amounts for projects that are not finalized tells me that there's a good chance you would need to come back and ask for additional appropriations because you are not certain as to what the cost for these programs would be. So there's going to be a lapse in time in waiting for applications and waiting for those applications to be reviewed. So I'm going to ask Mr. Palmer, what would be the process for just removing that particular appropriation from this bill?
The council is free to amend its proposed ordinance in any way it sees fit. So you could eliminate that line item and pass the rest of the ordinance.
That would be my preference.
Okay, is there any other council members that wish to make a, have a question? I was going to say, Councilmember McBride has a. Councilwoman McBride.
Thank you so much, Clerk Jones. I just, yeah, I wanted to follow up a little bit on the structure for neighborhoods in the corridor plan that you were talking about. Because I, with five hundred thousand dollars, I just wanted to see like, what type of example is given in the thought process that five hundred thousand dollars would be enough for all or most of the corridors? So is there, for the five hundred thousand dollar number, something came out of that? And so is there examples of what this five hundred thousand dollars entail?
Absolutely, I can provide some examples. So again, we've been having conversations with different neighborhood associations and also with the businesses in some of these corridors. So we've, we've discussed with some of the, some, some of the businesses in the corridors, the need for adding commercial trash cans, like the types of trash, trash cans that you see outside of downtown, but that are not present in some other parts of, in other corridors. And I know that that's been one of the conversations that we've had with you, I believe, around Miami. We've also had conversations with neighborhood associations that want to make signs that a display that the, that the corridor, the area is being monitored by a neighborhood association, by a, by a business association in the area, some other safety improvements. We also had conversations, again, like the meeting that I, that I mentioned with, with Councilman Davis. There's needs from the Kennedy Park Neighborhood Association and others. For instance, replacing the HVAC of the community center where they need that, I think, but it's been broken for, for a while. And, you know, it makes it impossible for them to use that space when it's too hot or too cold. So around the mechanism of how we plan to make that money be available, again, it would follow somewhat similar in the, the model that we use for the government innovations, the, the innovation grants for restaurants that, that some of the council have seen as being successful. So we generally would create some guidelines around how the, what types of expenses would be allowable in the program, give about a month or so to allow people to, to propose, put back some of those proposals before the group, and then execute the, the proposal based on the, on the types of recommendations that, that they're proposing. So I believe that the time that it took us from the time that we were designing the program from the time that some of the people were starting to see some of the funds were less than a month. Again, we, we put it here because we think that it is important, a lot of these organizations, both the, the corridors and the neighborhood associations have been severely impacted due to COVID, and we believe that they needed to be relieved sooner and, and, and with, with a sense of urgency and with a sense of priority. But hopefully, I answered your question around some of the types of expenses that we've been discussing.
I appreciate it, because I know for three years since eighteen, I've been asking for trash cans on Miami Street, but I was not aware that there were any meetings with any neighborhoods. I mean, well, not, at least in my neighborhood associations, because I, I attend them. And I had not been made aware of any of these asks or requests. And so I just hope to encourage that all council, if they're not involved, if we are all involved in this process, because there are definitely things. I have six neighborhood associations in my district, and they all have different asks or needs. So I would definitely like to be a part of a discussion to help with input and guide that along. I'll yield thanks.
Absolutely.
Okay, Councilman Wax?
Are there any of the CARES funds that haven't been spent yet?
I'll take that one. No, the, the entirety of the CARES funds was, were, were actually spent on the provision of public safety services in accordance with the IFA guidelines. So the Indiana Finance Authority in 2020 opened up the, the use of CARES funds to include public safety expenses. And so we, we did bring all of the CARES funds that were available to the city, which is somewhere in the neighborhood of three million dollars, to pay for those public safety expenses.
And without this appropriation, is there any other way to cover some of these proposed expenditures?
Certainly. And the, obviously, we, we covered the, the, the neighborhood, or excuse me, the grants to restaurants from part of the appropriation, the unfunded appropriation from the CARES Act. And so there's always abilities to shift around neighborhood dollars and those kinds of things, but that means we're not doing something else. And so in, in order to take advantage of the new funds that are coming into the city, and again, as Santi said, react quickly, there, we, we thought that it would be beneficial to have some money available to respond to these needs in the short term. I will say that there's no, there are no dollars that are not already allocated to something, right? So there's no pot of money where it's, this is money that we can use when things come up. That doesn't exist. So if we were to reallocate something to do these kinds of things as they come up for neighborhood associations or for the corridor businesses, it would mean not doing something else.
And I would just say, again, that we believe that these expenses are important because as people are starting to come out, we want to drive attention to some of our local businesses and also to our neighborhoods. And, you know, the, as Dan said, we, when the budget was designed for 2021, I think that the situation looked much different. We're in the middle of a pandemic with some grim economic outlook. So the budget was made in a way that was fairly conservative. And as the Councilwoman McBride mentioned, you know, the fact that we've been listening, we listen to the comments that you make in council, and when we talk, I think, like you brought the, the trash cans on Miami last time that I presented in front of council and the behest of, of Councilman Davis. So we're listening, but it's, it's only in certain opportunities that we have an opportunity of, of drive progress and drive progress intentionally. And, and again, our intent is to make this a process that is participatory. It's a process that's going to be informed by, by the, by the business associations and the neighborhood associations. So we want to deliver quickly and make sure that, that the, that the recovery is, is felt soon.
We're only talking two weeks, right?
Okay, I, I did have a question as well. Is there any other, because everybody had an opportunity, I believe. In, in reference to the, the, the American Rescue Plan Fund and how those dollars are spent, as we know, we have an upcoming meeting with the Finance Chair on that. As, as reference to like, a lot of the empty lots that we have, when you talk about the neighborhoods and needing help, can any of those funds be used to help those vacant lots that have not been cut and are getting, you know, debris caught in them, broken limbs that are in these lots? Seems to be that they're a bit behind on that. Do you foresee any of these dollars being used for that?
I think that for this particular appropriation, we are, again, we're going to ask the neighborhoods to see what are their priorities, and that might be some of the things that, that they see benefit. I know that this has been an area of active question from the council. The VPA, which does the mowing and the, of, of the, of a lot of the vacant lots have been running behind, but they, they were, they've been catching up. So I, I think that that's a question that Council President White asked not too long ago. So we've been catching up and trying to get back up to speed with, with the condition of those vacant lots. But again, this is, the, the, the rescue plan conversation is going to be a broader conversation. The reason why we asked for this is because we feel the need to take action and imminent action to make sure that some of, that our spaces, that our corridors and our neighborhoods feel a sense of vitality quickly. And it does the spirit that the federal government passed the, the, the rescue plan is to try to get the resources down to the people that need it in a, in an expedited fashion. So that's why this piece is there.
Yes.
Now, given what Lori asked, and I'm full of agreement, this only puts it off a couple of weeks, right? Is that how that will work? So two weeks is not going to make that big of a difference, per se, as it relates to getting the projects done. It'll still be done this summer. What we are obviously looking for is a a better understanding of how this is going to work within these, these neighborhoods. I, I don't, this is really hard for me for a number of reasons. And I, I don't want to explain that, but I, I'm not getting where the synergy is at, where the notion of doing these projects and why they should be done, what should be done. I, I can't pull that out of this. I'm asking you guys to pull it out, but you guys are not doing a very good job of that. And I'm not trying to admonish you, but if this was a sales pitch, I wouldn't buy it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Davis. I believe that we have all had an opportunity now. And so at this time, I would like to move to the public portion hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of bill one hundred dash twenty-one? Yes, Jordan Dager is, has his hand up. Jordan, please give your name and your address for the record, please. Now mute yourself. And then after Jordan is Jesse Davis that has his hand up as well.
I'm sorry, it's, it's not in favor.
Oh, okay, I didn't know.
Sorry.
Okay. Mr. Davis, is yours in favor?
Yes, I'm Jesse Davis, P O Box ten two oh five, South Bend, Indiana. I'm in favor of spending dollars in, in our neighborhoods. But I will say, I, I also have a lot of questions about some of the appropriations. One in particular, it was very hard to read on the screen of the computer here, but I saw a line item for sewer repairs. And I'm kind of curious, is that money they're allocating to the sewer insurance program? Because that sewer insurance program should be self-funding, and I'm just kind of curious why they're allocating more funds to that program. Because I sued the city over an issue with that program, and supposedly, they've been saving dollars and so on and so forth. So I'm kind of curious on why we're allocating more money into that fund because every citizen in the city of South Bend pays a monthly fee to that fund, and it should not be running over its budget by any means.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Parker?
Sure, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to answer. So yes, that is from the Sewer Repair Insurance Fund. So that, that is what that appropriation was for. We budget that fund based on a three-year average of utilization. So we look at the previous three years and see what utilization was like, and then use that to develop the budget for the upcoming year. And as it turns out, both 2020 and 2021 thus far have been really just very, very high levels of utilization of that program. So much stronger, much higher utilization than we've seen in the past three years on average. With that being said, over the long term, that sewer insurance program does fund itself. So the fee that's assessed to residents does go into that fund and then is used to pay out the expenses, and that fund does have a very healthy cash balance. I was just pulling it up as you were saying it, so I, I don't have it in front of me, but I can grab it here in a second. And, but it does have a strong cash balance and is expected to be stable in the long term. These things just fluctuate from year to year, and it's just, both 2020 and 2021 happen to be higher years than, than our, than our three-year average. um, sure, higher years than, than our, than our three-year average.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there anyone else present wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 100 dash 21?
Yes, uh, Jordan Geiger was, is present to speak in opposition.
Oh, I guess I should have asked if there's anyone else wishing to speak in favor. Sorry, done.
No, there is no one else that is expressing interest to speak in favor.
Okay, thank you. Then we will see who's, I know Jordan is wishing to speak in opposition. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, uh, Jordan Geiger, BLM 424 South Michigan Street. Um, it's kind of really hard when it's so binary, like speak for or against, uh, because I really don't have a position, a position. Um, I really just have a question. Um, I know you mentioned earlier that there would be some businesses um, along the corridors who you would look to um, support, you know, with, with this funding. Can you name some of those potential businesses or what the, what the outreach looks like? Or you even mentioned some programs. Um, what, what are those programs that this would fund? Uh, because like I mentioned earlier, I was in um, you know, that, that neighborhood and spoke with members of the Neighborhood Association. And they don't know about any of this, like they're not aware of what is happening. I'm, I know they received a letter about there being some planning work that's to come, but uh, I, I, I know people who are deeply involved in the Neighborhood Association who, I literally just talked to them like Sunday. And um, I know Henry and I had a meeting with someone from that same neighborhood who was asking like what's going on, what's happening. Um, so can you just talk a little bit about the outreach that you've done and what programs this mu- this money will support?
Yes, um, so um, I guess the, the reason why the neighbors haven't heard about this use of funds is because it hasn't been approved. So we haven't told the neighbors that the money is available, because if it's not available, we don't want to disappoint the neighborhoods in, in being able to uh, to use these funds. That's why they're unaware of this. Um, we've been working on a number of different venues and engaging with the different neighborhood associations. So uh, members from our and, a, a triple E team engagement, then Economic Empowerment Team uh, attend most of the Neighborhood Association meetings for most neighborhood associations. We also have other members from our team, including members of code enforcement that attend uh, those meetings. And obviously, we also have conversations with members from the different business associations, River Park, from East Bank Business Association and other areas. Um, and they've been communicating to us again about some of the challenges around the the um, the reopening, if you will, after the pandemic. So uh, increase in crime, um, increase, you know, in trash and littering and, and other things that come, you know, as a consequence of there being more people back in, in, in the streets and, and and, and engaging with them. So um, more more than having any specific kind of business that we're gonna work with, we, our plan is to work with all of the different business associations across the different corridors, as well as with the different neighborhood associations. Precisely as I mentioned, we over the past few years, we're listening um over some of those needs, and we think that uh, at a time as critical as now um, where we have this funding and we have the need to reactivate the economy and reactivate the spaces that, that we should be making some of these expenditures to help advance those goals. So um, again, we, we haven't promised anything because it is not for us to promise until the, the money has been appropriated by the council, and the council, uh, we know that has jurisdiction over that. If the council does not appropriate it this quarter, it won't be available for the entire quarter and uh, be up for, you know, like if we for the appropriation next quarter, then, then we'd have to wait another quarter before we we make the, any, you know, like any requests. Um, so that's why, but that's why people don't know is because we're working on designing the programs, but we're counting on waiting on the, on the funding before we actually finalize the design of the plans and, and go and execute.
I'll just, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just gonna, if I could ask just one thing, I mean, this, the, I don't know if I said it at this evening's meeting or just this um, this afternoon, but the, it is, I mean, it's important to keep in mind that this is less than 1% of the total amount of the funding from the ARP. And so all, a lot of the engagement that'll, that'll take place with the, with the neighborhood associations around the big pot of money that'll be available, that'll take place in the, in the upcoming months and, and even years, because it just takes a long time to spend that amount of money. Um, and so the, the, this small pot of money, the $500,000, is really just meant to be agile and, and be able to engage quickly um, as things arise and, and, and be able to say, uh, if a neighborhood association says, hey, you know, it would be great if we could do $50,000 to just do this thing, and that would really help us get back on our feet. Um, that, this would allow us to react very quickly to that.
Well, I, I'll just say lastly, like, I think it's important to set a good precedent and um, I, I referenced that a housing market study from 2017. Um, back then, I think President White, you remember this, um, there was concern from members of KPNA or Kennedy Park Neighborhood Association, and also from La Salle um, area or the lake um, about that appropriation. It was a part of a whole spending bill, and that line item um, was actually pooled, kind of like what Lori or Councilwoman Hammond is suggesting, so that there could be more conversation about how residents um, could participate and, and have a better understanding about how that money would, would be spent. So I think it's just important to set a good precedent um, in terms of neighborhood en- engagement. And if it's next quarter, that's only a couple of months. Or right, like another month or so, I mean, we're going into the seventh month now, so.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a point of order?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Garcia said he would have to wait until the following quarter. Is that true, that he would have, would we be able to address this single appropriation in the last meeting in July?
I believe you could approve a special appropriation if it was requested.
Thank you.
I also was going to ask that question as we began. I would not want to penalize the other um parts of the substitute bill 100 dash 21. But it does appear that there are some uh, questions and a need for a much broader discussion so that once we do come for action, uh, that the council is, would be ready to take action on the $500,000, knowing that we will also be preparing for the July 14th meeting, where we have a much broader discussion on the ARP dollars. And so in light of that, I would like to suggest that we would amend uh, Bill, Substitute Bill 100 21 and to pull out the $500,000 for further discussion, but to bring that back in a special appropriation at our next meeting in July, the first meeting in July.
Is that enough?
That's just, no, that's just a recommendation that I would like to put on the floor so that we can move forward with uh, the substitute bill. I don't want that to hinder what needs to happen.
Okay, thank you, President White. And Councilwoman Hammond, and at this time, I just need to ask if there's anyone else wishing to speak in opposition of this bill?
There is no one else from the public wishing to speak in opposition?
Thank you. At this point, we're gonna close the public hearing on Bill 100 dash 21. And I see we had a statement from President White. Um, anybody else wish to make a statement, Councilman Wax?
I just want to frame um, my perspective. And I, I think that investing in our local businesses and neighborhoods and um diversifying that some of those expenditures outside just downtown South Bend, I think is a great idea. I think that's very important that we do that with those COVID funds. I, I do also think that uh, we should be conscious that we're not doing this piecemeal and that we're looking at it all of it together. I would suggest that perhaps we don't need to have the final comprehensive plan for that, is it 59 million? All at one shot, perhaps we could do it and, you know, sort of break it out. But I think that's a conversation that we could have on on um, July 14th as to how we distribute it. I don't think we need to necessarily figure out every dollar before we spend any, but I don't think we should be spending some before we've even had an initial conversation.
Is there anybody else wish to make a statement? Councilwoman Tomas Morgan?
Yeah, I just had a question. I mean, um, July 14th, which is our first ARP session, is that correct?
That's correct.
Um, comes two days after um, our next meeting in
Last meeting in July.
July.
You can move to the last.
The last meeting?
It could be the last meeting, July.
Okay, that was just
Bill for first reading on July 12th, it wouldn't make it to the
Okay.
July. Potentially.
I just wanted to clarify, I thought you said the next meeting.
Okay, is there anybody else wishing to make a statement on this bill?
Councilmember McBride has her hand up.
Councilwoman McBride?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to Santi and to uh, Mr. Parker for the presentation, and it did give a better clarification with your explanation on some of the specifics. Um, so I just want to say thank you for that. And I think uh, finally addressing some of the issues that some of the neighborhoods have wanted in the past is great. Um, but I think also I could, I would follow the uh, path of my um constituents, my, my colleagues' recommendations. But I think that that was a very uh, good explanation, and, and we're heading in the right direction. Thank you.
Okay, any other council members? And thank you for the presentation, Mr. Parker.
I forgot to mention that. Thank you very much. I appreciate the form of the presentation.
Councilman Davis, you had a statement?
Sure, uh, and this goes along with this bill and all the other things that we've been looking at since we've been here. Um, the continuity between the projects and the idea of how or when does do these projects take full um, the outcomes from it, obviously, we're, that's what we're looking for, the outcomes. We're looking for good outcomes, great outcomes. Um, there is a missing piece, and, and I think that this is what's happening to my, my, my level of experience being here. Um, there needs to be a discussion with the mayor on what happens, on what he's looking for to see happen with these projects. Um, department heads can only take it so far, and I got that. Uh, and the council uh, has their own set of priorities, but look, I need the introduction of the mayor into these discussions. I need to hear the mayor's voice. I need to hear him answer some of these questions. Because some of this stuff is becoming really, really difficult to follow. And uh, without me saying anything to, to admonish or to insult anyone, I really believe in things that if the mayor was here at these meetings, at some of these meetings, um, to explain and answer some of these questions, it should be able to give the council more clarity and a better understanding of where we're going with this. Right now, it's just, it's just out there. And, and I'm becoming very frustrated with the process and very disappointed as well.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Davis. Is there anybody else wish to make a statement? I think we may have covered everybody. So at this time, I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 100 dash 21.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend Bill 100 dash 21 on the floor to remove the $500,000 from the American Rescue Plan Fund Number 263. And then move the remainder of the substitute bill, do we do the amendment in one?
Yes.
Vote?
Second. You got it.
Okay.
Point of order?
Yeah.
Is your amendment also to change the total number on the bottom?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, that's correct.
442,0175. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
I have a point of order question as well.
Ask Attorney Palmer.
Uh, Attorney Palmer, is that, um, does that need to be done with two motions?
First motion would be a motion to amend. If that passes, then it's a motion to send the amended bill on to the uh, uh, full council with a favorable or unfavorable recommendation.
Oh, got it.
So I made the motion to amend.
Also add that uh, we had discussed that, that um the $500,000 that has been in this part of this particular bill to come before the council back in July.
Would that need to be a new appropriations bill?
Yes, it would have, yeah.
Okay. What was the change in the dollar amount again?
I think the bottom line number is uh, 5,442,0175.
Okay, so we do have a motion.
Got a second too.
And there is a second. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Jones. Um, let's see. Um, I'll now entertain another motion to accept the substitute bill.
Substitute and amended, as amended.
As amended.
So I make a motion that we send the substitute bill as amended um, to the full council with a favorable.
Second.
Okay, there has been a motion and a second. Um, Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Um, the motion to accept the amended bill number 100 dash 20 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. At this point, I would like to entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the whole and repair, report back to the full council.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Full council is now back in session. This is the portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading, and action is taken regarding the bill that was heard during the committee of the whole. Clerk Jones, will you please give third reading to Bill 94 dash 21?
9421, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 233 and 237 Pagan Street, Councilmanic District Number Two in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Councilwoman Niskoski, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill 94 dash 21?
Uh, yes, President White, Bill 9421 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 94 dash 21.
I move for passage.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Bill 94 dash 21 has passed. Clerk Jones, will you please give third reading to Bill 96 dash 21?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common, sorry, 9621. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, creating the American Rescue Plan Fund Number 263.
Councilwoman Niskoski, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill 96 dash 21?
Yes, President White, Bill 9621 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 96 dash 21.
Move for passage.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill 96 dash 21 has passed. Will you please give third reading to Bill 97 dash 21?
9721, third reading on an ordinance of the South Bend Common Council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, creating the Professional Sports and Convention Development Area Fund Number 413.
Yes, Councilwoman Niskos- Yes, Councilwoman Nisgatsky, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill 96-21?
Yes, President White, Bill 97-21 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I move for passage.
Okay, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you?
No, there's no second, that was not original motion.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
I second.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill 97-21 has passed. Clerk Jones, will you please give third reading to Bill 98-21?
98-21, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending ordinance number 10752-20, which fixed maximum salaries and wages of appointed officers and non-bargaining employees of the city of South Bend for calendar year 2021, to establish two new full-time positions.
Councilwoman Nisgatsky, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill 98-21?
Yes, President White, Bill 98-21 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I would now like to entertain a motion regarding Bill 98-21.
I'd like to move for passage.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill 98-21 has passed. Will you now please give third reading to Bill 99-21?
99-21, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana, for the year 2021.
Is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole?
Yes, President White, Bill 99-21 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 99-21.
Move for passage of Bill 99-21.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill 99-21 has passed. Will you please give third reading to Bill 100, substitute bill 121, as amended in the committee of the whole?
121, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city services operations for the year 2021, of $1,016,000 from Parks and Recreation Fund Number 201, $144,380 from the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund Number 202, $588,177 from the Economic Development State Grant Fund Number 210, $34,092 from the DCI Operations Fund Number 211, $55,488 from the Gift Donation Bequest Fund Number 217, $65,000 from the Law Enforcement Continuing Education Fund Number 220, $23,862 from the Code Enforcement Fund Number 230, $100,000 from the Lloyd 2016 Special Distribution Fund Number 257, $1,000,000 from the COVID-19 Response Fund Number 264, $25,105 from the Local Road and Bridge Grant Fund Number 265, $646,763 from the IT Innovation 311 Call Center Fund Number 279, $57,118 from the Cops More Grant Fund Number 295, $150,000 from the Local Income Tax Certified Shares Fund Number 404, $494,290 from the Local Income Tax Economic Development Fund Number 408, $23,862 from the Consolidated Building Fund Number 600, $197,600 from the Sewer Repair Insurance Fund Number 640, and $868,162 from the Building Corporation Fund Number 755.
Councilwoman Nisgatsky, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding substitute bill as amended?
Point of order, the bill as it's titled has to be read for the third reading. I believe Clerk Jones omitted the $500,000 that came out because of the amendment.
Okay, yeah, we did amend the bill.
She says she did take it out.
But you have to say it.
I have to say it?
You have to say it.
She has to say it in order? Can she say it now?
Does she have to go back?
She can say it now.
Okay. Do I say the whole thing?
No.
Oh, okay.
Just add the $500,000.
Okay. $500,000 from the American Rescue Plan Fund Number 263.
And you would like a report?
Yes. Councilwoman Nisgatsky, is there a report from the committee of the whole regarding substitute bill 100-21 as amended in the committee of the whole?
Yes, President White, Bill, substitute bill 100-21 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation as amended.
Is there a motion?
I move for passage of the amended substitute bill 100-21.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Substitute bill as amended in the committee of the whole 100-21 has passed. We'll now move into our resolution portion. Clerk Jones, would you please read Resolution 21-40, and I would like to offer my apologies to the developer that we're just now getting to this resolution. This has been a full agenda, and we really appreciate you still staying with us, and we want to hear from you regarding your project. So at this time, Clerk Jones, would you please read Resolution 21-40?
21-40, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 504 South Lafayette Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana, 46601, an economic revitalization area for purposes of an eight-year multifamily real property tax abatement for Real America Development LLC.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
There is, President White. This came before Community Investment Committee this afternoon and comes before the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a present, a presentation from Community Investment?
Yes, Madam President, this is Santiago Garcés, Executive Director of the Department of Community Investment. Hope you haven't gotten tired of me yet, but I want to present to you a really exciting project for, it's a proposed project for a tax credit in the area close to the baseball stadium, to Kavalevsky Stadium and Four Winds Field. Just a reminder that the, that the tax credit process is a competitive process, those tax credits are allocated at the state level, it's a very, it's a highly competitive process that requires the city to match the investment at least at 10%, and about, and it also requires $100,000 minimum investment of site improvements within a quarter mile of the site, as well as administrative support. So unfortunately, in the recent past, South Bend hasn't had any successful applications for these tax credits, but we are excited to work with the developer and with the different partners to try to get this project going. The tax credit that the, the tax abatement that we're requesting is conditional, based on the award of the tax credit, so the tax credit's not awarded in November, the, the, the tax abatement won't move forward, nor will the transfer of the property. The site is the lot, this vacant lot, which is owned by the city, that's currently not generating any tax revenue. It is across the street from the baseball stadium, and we are excited to have a mix of affordable and market rate units. It will eventually generate about $460,000 of tax revenue per year, and generate about four new full-time jobs that would pay $166,000 annually. You have a layout of this site, again, which includes, I believe, two buildings that are four-story high with an elevator, and that includes a number of units, one, two, and three-bedroom units. I'll let the presenter, the petitioner tell you a little bit about how they came up with those sizes, but it's based on close communication with some of the partners around the affordable housing side of things. Again, the petitioner is, has invested already in, in our city. They were the company that was behind the LaSalle Hotel renovation, which was a, you know, a critical reactivation of, of an asset that had been abandoned for a number of years. This is a picture of some other projects that they have done in, in other parts of the state. Again, I believe that the total amount of taxes to be abated over four, over eight years is $1.9 million, again, corresponding with the $19 million investment in, in the project. And as I mentioned during the committee, it is, there's been a lot of collaboration, a lot of communication with different, with some of the key stakeholders in that area, with the South Bend Cubs, which the, who developed the Ivy Apartments across the street, with the South Bend Housing Authority, which is helping coordinate some of the, the vouchers to, to enable the, the, the project. And at this point, I'll turn over to the petitioner. Jeff, go ahead.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jeff Ryan, I'm Vice President of Development for Real America. Want to tell you a little bit, Real America, as a reminder, is a vertically-integrated WBE real estate company based in Indianapolis. We do development, design, general contracting, and property management. Rhonda Waverite founded the company in 1995 specifically to develop affordable housing. We have since branched out and other product types. In those 26 years, we have never sold an apartment development. With our experience with LaSalle has made us so we're eager to come back to South Bend. It's been a very good development. We've been recently, and most of the time, other than, for a brief time when Mayor Pete dropped out of the presidential race and we lost some residents at that time, we've been 95, 98% occupied on there. So we know that there is a market for apartments and more apartments in downtown. So we're proposing 127 new apartments on this site, with 60 of them being affordable in a single four-story elevator building, an additional 60 market rate in a second single four-story elevator building, and seven townhouses in a building on Main Street. We're proposing a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments with about 21 bedrooms, 24 two-bedrooms, and 16 three-bedrooms as part of the affordable apartments, with a mix of 30%, 50%, and 60% AMI apartments, that's area median income, so that is helping out the poor. And as Santi said, we're looking to partner with a Logan Center to provide quality housing for their intellectually and developmentally disabled clients. We'll set aside 12 apartments for this population, and the Logan Center will provide supportive services to help them live independently. And you see the, the site plan that's on your, your screen right now. Unfortunately, we don't have a rendering for this yet, but that's because we're designing something specific to downtown South Bend. We aren't just recycling something that's been used before, but looking at what the architecture is in the area, and we'll be designing something that fits in with that architecture. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions from the petitioner or from Community Investment?
I have a question, President White.
Councilwoman Nisgatsky?
Thank you. In the committee, I had pointed out, the, there was no in, in your application here for the tax abatement. Local, employ local companies, no. Purchase materials for local companies, no. Require employees over independent contractors, no. Everything is checked to no in the first section of that box, except for maintaining an affirmative action plan. And the project that you did at the LaSalle Hotel, I believe that you brought in your own workers from a private company to do that. Can you tell me if you will be opening this process up to local contractors for the bid process, or is this another private, you know, building that you'll be bringing in your own independent contractors?
Well, we'll be the general contractor for this. That's one of the, the lines of business we're in. We want to make sure that it's done right, so we want to, to control that. We will be bidding out the subcontracts as we did with LaSalle, and with LaSalle, we did hire many local South Bend contractors for that. The reason that we couldn't mark the boxes on there is because it was 75% of the contract to be local. And when we have a couple of longstanding relationships with companies like 84 Lumber and EnviroMax, those two contracts alone for lumber and HVAC cover more than 25% of the total contract cost. So that's why we couldn't mark that box and commit to 75% local. We are definitely going to be bidding this out locally and getting as many local contractors as we can.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from council members?
Yes.
A councilmember Davis?
I was trying, I can read it. There was the question earlier about the price of these particular apartments, and I think we were at 30% were going to be, I'm, I'm not sure how many apartments fit this criteria that was laid out earlier, meaning 30% of the, I think it was the MIA, if that was, if I'm saying it right, and then you have 50% and 60%. I don't know how many that is.
We are proposing to have 15 apartments at 30% of area median income, 15% at 50% of area median income, 30 apartments at 60% of area median income, and then 67 apartments at market rate. So we'll have a wide range and a good number of units at each of the levels.
So what is market rate?
Market rate, we're looking at pricing similar to what is across the street at the Ivy, so we're looking at about $1,000 to $2,000 per month for rent.
Okay.
And that compares to our affordable units, which are going to be $320 to $1,000. So there'll be a, the affordable units are significantly less expensive than the market rate.
Sure.
I just had that, that is, again, precisely the, the mixed income nature of the project is one of the things, what makes us excited to support it, because we believe that when we have mixed incomes, we, we get better outcomes, and, and it helps build stronger neighborhoods.
Sure, but you have more higher-priced units than you have lower price. Your demographic here, or your population here cannot handle that high level of investment when it comes to, uh, uh, rent. The Ivy looks like that they're having problems getting people in there because they are significantly higher. they are significantly higher, and so many other places as well. I'm just concerned if we are participating in the development of this, the city, that we are painting a picture to the rest of the world, because this is Second District. And you understand the concerns of the Second District, and the issues of the Second District, that the people that live in the Second District do no longer belong in the Second District. There, and also across the street over at the Housing Authority complex, because that's a part of the same discussion. We're talking about tax credits, we're talking about market rate studies, we're talking about a number of things. And all of these things fit in together. But what I do know is that the people that I represent cannot afford these properties. And so that goes back to my original discussion last bill, about getting a strategy or understanding a strategy from the mayor's office, because we're not hearing anything from there.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. I do see a hand up. Councilwoman McBride?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to follow up with Councilwoman Niskoski was saying, and I'm a little bit more comfortable after hearing about utilizing local contractors. But is there a number that we have for how many local contractors were utilized for the LaSalle project?
I believe it was, we used 31% that were based in St. Joseph County.
So the commitment would be to utilize some local contractors?
Yes.
And not independent contractors?
Yes.
Are there any other questions from council members? Seeing Councilman Kenneth Lee?
Again, to just echo what the other council members are saying, as you can see, we're very much concerned about making sure that the opportunities are made for local contractors to be a part of this, and then also making sure that these are going to be affordable for people in the Second District. So I just wanted to make that statement, that is, that's where the council members are thinking, is we want to make sure that this is a win-win for everybody.
Thank you. We'll now move to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak in support of Resolution 21-40?
There is no one from the public that has expressed interest to speak in support of Resolution 21-40.
Is there anyone waiting to speak in opposition?
There is no one waiting to speak in opposition of Resolution 21-40.
The public hearing portion is now closed. I'll go back to council members prior to asking for a motion. Are there any comments that council members would like to make at this time?
Yes. You know, I want to know if there's any appetite in the council to, and this is not a motion, but to move this over until we get an explanation of all the funds that are out there that we're getting ready to use, what the care is at. Again, I keep saying it, there's no strategy that I've been privy to or need to understand. And I think I'm very intimately involved in my area. I don't want to see this not happen. That's not what I'm getting at. But what I am getting at is that I need to be able to connect the dots. I'm not getting any dots connected. And it'll be irresponsible of me to just support these projects as they come along without understanding what our strategy is as a city as it relates to affordable housing and these developments.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmembers, just one moment. We're at the council portion making statements, and I'll come back to you, Santi. Councilman Kenneth Lee?
Yes. One of the things that I'm, you know, just moving forward is, you know, there's all these other people that have been brought into the knowledge of what's getting ready to happen, and we haven't been. So that, to me, is an issue. We want to be a part of these discussions so that everybody has a better understanding of what's getting ready to happen. But I am for affordable housing, and I would love to see a lot that's not getting utilized, be brought back on the tax roll and be used. But we want to be a part of those discussions.
Are there any other comments from council members at this time? Councilwoman Rachel Thomas Morgan?
Yes, thank you, President White. First of all, I just want to thank you, Mr. Ryan, for your continued interest and investment in the city of South Bend with the LaSalle Apartments, and now with this proposed project. I know that this is a competitive project as you both, as Mr. Garces has described, this tax abatement is contingent upon this being passed as a tax credit project. That application is due soon, or tomorrow, if I recall that correctly. I do just want to say that there is a real need for housing in our city. I think we all know that. And housing at various types. So for housing at all levels, I was able to listen to a recent presentation on our housing. Mr. Garces, you'll have to help me. It was the housing study that was recently completed. And I was just floored. Number one, excited about the need for housing, in that there are people moving to South Bend and wanting to call this place home and can't find housing. And then also challenged by the need for more affordable housing. So I think this project, in many ways, I'm really excited about it, because it brings together a diversity of people that we're trying to bring together as neighbors in a formerly distressed area. I think it would have been really pretty easy for a developer to purchase this land and build high-end housing there, right next to the Ball Park, because it's desirable location now. But this is a project that brings diversity together as neighbors. And I do believe that that kind of diversity in neighborhoods is what a thriving city and neighbors look like. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hammond?
I have to say that I have some concerns moving forward because of the location and the fact that Hope Rescue Mission is right across the street. And I know that there are some of the, for lack of a better word, power brokers in the city that are looking at moving them out of their location. And I don't want to add any additional pressures that location, and those services have been provided out of that building for a very long time. And I know you can't make any guarantees for us, but I just want to voice those concerns that I have, that the Hope Rescue Mission be allowed to continue providing the services to the population that they serve without any additional pressures for them to be moved out of their current location. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any, Councilman Wax?
I'll be brief in light of the time. I just want to thank you for your continued investment in South Bend. I hope this, I hope the application goes through so that this project could go forward. I do commend you for trying to look for opportunities to provide housing at a bunch of different market rates or a bunch of different price points. And I want to thank Santi also. Just today, we've heard from different programs to provide housing, both from high-end apartments to subsidized apartments to the steel, whatever they're called.
Container houses.
Container houses. So, you know, we know that there's a need for housing in South Bend, and I appreciate that you guys are really working to be open-minded as to what that may look like. So thank you.
Are there any other comments? Councilman Troy Warner?
Thank you, President White. There's a need for housing. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I heard he's bringing 60 units with a rent ranging from $320 to $1,000. Last month, I spent quite a bit of time trying to find somebody housing, and we had a hard time finding anything under $1,000. So I think having 60 units under that $1,000 and all the way down to $320 is not something we should be taking lightly. And we heard from Mr. Berlin that, two weeks ago, that the Ivy is full. We heard from Mr. Ryan that the LaSalle is pretty close to full. And I know JMS is pretty close to full. So you keep hearing from skeptics that, you know, you can't fill these market rate apartments, but somehow they are doing that. So I see this as a good thing. I do have some concerns about the level of local contractor participation. We heard from Mr. Fair at Holiday Properties that, you know, you have to think of these projects and the city's involvement on the tax abatement end as being kind of a partnership and working cooperatively with the city. That means the residents, and that includes those folks who build buildings for a living. So, but thank you for considering our city again, sir.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to Santi, and I did not know if you wanted to make a comment before I'll ask for a motion.
Yeah, that'd be great. Again, thank you all for listening to the petition. And if there's any fault in communication with the council, it's on me. As you can tell, we work very diligently on a large number of issues, from lead, contractor licensing, neighborhoods, and obviously development. And if there's a lapse in communicating to the council, please put it on my tab. And I hope you know that it is out of goodwill, because there's a lot of important work that we need to do. This kind of project gets finalized, you know, the tax credit application is looming. Jeff, just remind me, when is the submission? It's July?
July 26th is when the applications are due.
July 26th. So, you know, we're working with a number of people that are interested in this kind of projects, and they tend to happen rather quickly. So we've been connecting, obviously, we heard the resolution from the council around working with the Housing Authority, so we've been working with the Housing Authority, and we work with other people that are invested in this area. So in some sense, we've been trying to follow what we would have thought the will of the county, the council is. I would just remind, this application has nothing to do with the American Rescue Plan. It is a tax abatement. Currently, that property is not generating any taxes. If the tax abatement does not pass, the city cannot contribute this 10% match to the project. And unfortunately, that would probably mean that the project is not viable. So this, just, again, the city's not a developer. The city counts on people that are interested in developing and investing in the community. That's why there's no master development plan for the city, because we rely on developers like Real America to make commitments to the city. And in this case, it is timely. It's obviously the will of the council deciding whether they're going to grant the tax abatement or not. But we feel very positively, we think that this is going to be a great project. It's going to be great to seeing new construction in the south part of the city, seeing more different owners that are investing, leveraging mixed income, and having people from different walks of life in some sense. Addressing the housing needs is partly what prevents homelessness as well. So again, I am grateful for your consideration. Again, I would apologize if there's any lapse in communication. It's not out of ill intention, but rather stretched thin and working hard for the residents.
Thank you. Now entertain a motion regarding Resolution.
I wanted to clarify some points. I didn't say that this was a part. What I was saying is part of the discussion for the strategy with the money that we do have from American Bank. What's going on is that you're watching a systematic way of depleting a voting block or overtaking it. That's what's going on here. Now, whether they know it or not, but that's what's happening. If you take out voting blocks and replace them, you replace this council. So I want you guys to understand that's what's going on, or that's the final, the finality of this. You have diversity a part of your conversation. You have four blacks up here right now. When these plans take place and actually happen, you will no longer have four blacks. You may have two. You may have one. You won't have four anymore. This Second District makes sure that you have the full representation up here on this council. So when you talk about diversity, you're using diversity in a way that becomes weaponized to the black electorate. And so I'm not saying that don't do this. I am saying we need a better strategy, we need better understanding. Kathy said that. No one knows what's going on. I'm telling you what's going on, because I haven't seen this before. If you continue to allow these projects to go on, South Bend does not look like a diversified city of the 20th century. It looks like the white man's haven who has money.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. I'm going to entertain a motion regarding Resolution
Move for passage.
I second. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Resolution 21-40 has been adopted. Would like to say that this, I will be summarizing some of our comments and some of the questions, and we'll be sharing those with the council members after this meeting. We'll now move to Resolution 21-22. Clerk Jones, would you please read Resolution 21-22?
21-22. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, in support of proclaiming the month of September as hope for the day's 2021 National Suicide Prevention and Action Month.
And this will not have a committee report, because this was taken action at our previous meeting. It is to correct an error that was not included. So I'm going to go to our attorney to give a summary, and then we would just need to vote on the corrected.
Correct, President White. There was a scrivener's error. An earlier draft was submitted for filing and voted on by the council. When it passed, Oaklawn was inadvertently omitted from the final draft, well, from the draft that was passed. And this corrects that oversight on my part, and includes Oaklawn as a partner for providing mental health services in this county.
So what we need to is to have a motion to accept the corrected?
Yes.
Version of Resolution 21-22. So moved. Second. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember David?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Resolution 21-22 is adopted based on the correction. There's no bills for first reading. Is there any unfinished business, council members? Any unfinished business? Is there any new business? Council members, no new business. We'll now go to the privilege of the floor. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak on the privilege? Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak on the privilege of the floor?
Yes, we have Jordan Geiger, who is waiting to speak on privilege of the floor. Jordan, if you could mute yourself, state your name and your address for the record, please.
I would also like to add, under privilege of the floor, individuals will be limited to three minutes only. The maximum time for this portion of the meeting shall be thirty minutes. Individuals should not be permitted to address topics which the council has heard previously as well. And so that any questions that you might have, if they can be addressed by the council members, we will do so. Or if not, they will be shared with the various departments.
Yeah, Jordan Geiger, Belem, South Bend, four-two-four, South Michigan Street. I just want to echo some of the comments that have been raised tonight that aren't necessarily pertaining to items on the agenda. And that's that we have to really think more critically about what diversity and inclusion, especially inclusion, looks like as we do business in the city. Constantly what I'm hearing, and the theme seems to be that the black community is an afterthought over and over again. Even, even just what Councilman Davis raised about, you know, gentrification. I think oftentimes, you know, we aren't being conscious of the decisions that we're making around infrastructure, around housing development. When you look at the city of Chicago and the concerns that have been raised there around the dilution of the black vote, that has a lot to do with the fact that the city began investing in high-income, market-rate housing development where they were building up, which over time diluted the black vote. And then at the same time, you have black folks moving out of the city of Chicago. We know that Chicago and Illinois are experiencing some of the highest rates of outmigration. We know that Indiana and even the city of South Bend is talking about how we can capture that outmigration of folks. So when you think about the South Shore Development Plan, recognizing that the cost of living is rising in Chicago, so then how can we create housing that is lower than the cost of that in Chicago so that we can capture people working in healthcare and finance and IT, right? And they can take a shuttle quickly or train quickly to work in downtown Chicago. So I, again, I just think we need to really center equity inclusion. We know that there's a lot of money coming from the Rescue Plan. And we do need to have, we do need to understand like what the plans are in order to ensure that those who are living at the margins are receiving the assistance and the help that they need. So I just wanted to offer that up before this council that we, you know, that we started using those ten questions that were put forward in that diversity, I'm sorry, in the racial disparity report. There was ten guiding questions that were laid out in that. Since that report had been commissioned, I still don't hear those questions coming up in a real critical way. So, yeah, I'm hoping that we can just take a deeper look into these, into these issues and think more consciously about how this budget will uplift those who are, this upcoming budget will uplift those who are most disenfranchised.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, is anyone else waiting? There is no one else from the public waiting to speak on privilege of the floor.
Move for adjournment.
I don't think we have to vote on that. No.
No.
This meeting is adjouring.
Thank you.
President White?
Thank you.
I am going to break those ten questions. And let's say that the city commission the study. And I think we put it in our neighborhood meeting as well. The policies that we're dealing with. Yeah, and that stuff, I don't know if it's a new study, but the study that I was aware of was done, was done, health, and some of the health. And so I don't know what they give us for new one or it's.